Shall I forge ahead with the opening statement? Or is there a reason that we should?
I just started the webinar, so you can go whenever you're ready.
Thank you. This is a special meeting of the Planning Board, November 17th, 2020 pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act. Adequate notice of the time and place of this special meeting has been given by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on the 27th day of October 2020. Notice of this meeting has been posted to the municipal website, princetonnj.gov/meetings. Choose the Planning tab to view. Pursuant to Executive Order 107, due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19 coronavirus, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the 8th day of April 2020. Such notices have been placed on the official bulletin board at the Princeton Municipal Complex and on the Princeton website and will be maintained throughout the year. Notices have also been placed on all windowed doors of the municipal complex. Please note, members of the general public, that as with regular in-person meetings, members of the public will have an opportunity at specific points in the proceedings to comment and ask questions. Please be aware, this meeting is being recorded. Those wishing to comment orally should virtually raise your hand using the button at the bottom center of your Zoom screen, or if you're participating by phone, by pressing star nine. If you're having difficulty accessing the raise hand feature, use the Q and A dialogue box for assistance. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. For those who do offer comments, we ask that you please do your best to keep your comments to roughly three minutes or less, and that you activate the camera on your device so that the board and other meeting participants and attendees may see you. If you don't know how to do that, we can help guide you through it. After you've been transferred into the meeting as a participant, our attorney, Mr. Mueller, will swear you in and ask you to state your name, spell your last name for the record, and tell us where you live, and then you may offer your testimony. Inappropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or relating to matters not for the board will be muted. In the unlikely event this should happen, the person who had to be muted will be moved to the back of the line and allowed to speak again, provided he or she is civil. Carrie, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, certainly. Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Oh, Mr. Oakman?
Here.
Ms. Sacks?
Here.
Mr. Tex Arnie?
Here.
Ms. Wilson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is announcements. Do we have any to share? Board member, or staff, or anyone? Okay. Then we'll go straight into the resolution. We have a resolution from, related to the application from the trustees of Princeton University from October 1st, 2020, the East Campus Garage at Faculty and Fitz Randolph Roads, Block 50.01, Lot 18, File Number P 2020-854P. Any questions? Or? Mr. Cohen, did you just move it?
I did. Second.
That's seconded, and Ms. Quinn?
I think it was Mr. McGowan actually beat me to it there.
Oh, okay.
I was, I was the first second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay. Next on the agenda are applications. The first is Thaddeus Pronell, the Minor Site Plan with Variants Regarding Signage. This is at 17 Witherspoon Street, Block 27.01, Lot 4.02, File Number P 2020-810P. The original extent, the original deadline was in June, the 23rd. It's been extended to November 18th, which is tomorrow. Mr. Mueller, can you speak to proper notice and jurisdiction?
Yes, notice and service of proper and Board has jurisdiction.
Great. Mr. La Place, do you want to start us off?
Yes, thank you very much.
Michael, if you could raise your right hand. You swear or affirm testimony about to give the truth?
I do.
Just one or two.
This application, the applicant is Thaddeus Pronell, and it's for the business J. McLaughlin, which is a clothing and accessory store located at 17 Witherspoon Street in Princeton. The location is about a block north of Nassau Street on the east side of Witherspoon Street, and it is within the locally designated Central Historic District, as well as it is also within the Princeton Historic District, which is on the State and National Register of Historic Places. It's a three-story building with obviously commercial use on the first floor and residences above, and it's an interesting location because even though it's not a corner site, it is visible from the northerly side of the building because it's set back from a public alley, and there's an open area where currently used for parking, which you'll hear about. That's the site of where the application involves a sign variance. It's interesting, actually, originally this application was involving two variances for signage. One, to have a sign painted on this northerly elevation because our code allows for wall-mounted signage facing a street, and if you're a corner building, you can have wall-mounted signage facing each street, but this is technically not a corner building because it doesn't technically face a public street, even though it's visible on two sides. So you'll hear a little bit about that. So the variance before you tonight, one of the original two was for this sign to be painted on the facade. I think they're proposing 26 square feet of signage where 20 square feet is permitted, and it, you'll hear it's a very attractive proposal. It was, it was positively received by the Historic Preservation Commission. Elizabeth might want to talk a little bit about that later on. And the other variance originally that was, that was requested was to allow a blade sign to be installed on the Witherspoon side, front elevation of the building. And the reason why, even though, as you all know, we have an ordinance that permits blade signs or projecting signs, this one needed a variance because of the placement of the blade sign on the facade. The way we crafted the projecting sign ordinance, projecting signs have to be a minimum three feet in from the edge of a front facade, and this would have been six inches. The reason why is there's sort of a physical hardship because of the way the windows were in the front of the storefront windows, you could, three feet would have been where glazing was. So that, that pushed where they wanted the blade sign. But you'll, you'll hear, maybe Elizabeth can elaborate on this. The report of the Historic Preservation, Historic Preservation Commission said that they felt that having the blade sign would be excessive signage. So I, I'd like the applicant to confirm that the reason why the application was revised was to, I guess it was in reaction to that comment from HPC, and they're going forward with just the request for the painted sign on the northerly elevation, the side of the building facing north. I just want to comment before we hear from the applicant that this municipality, and I was on the committee that worked on it as well, some of the other people here tonight, to draft and have approved an ordinance to permit projecting signs. So I hope in the future, we're all supportive of projecting signs because that's very much what the ordinance was, was supposed to be promoting, allowing this. So, but I, if the case was that this second request was pulled, that as a result of the comments from the Historic Preservation Commission, I salute the applicant for being gracious in doing that. But I hope in the future, we're all supportive of this ordinance that we all work very hard on to, to encourage projecting signs. So I think that's about it. It's in the CB Central Business Zone, as I mentioned, so it's permitted use really just before you is the consideration for the, for the additional signage on the northerly facade. And I guess that's about it from staff.
Okay. Then I think the, Ms. Sacks?
Yeah, I, I had a couple of questions, but if, I wasn't sure if you were getting to, when you get to questions, I had a couple.
Well, yeah, do you have a question for Mr. La Place? Or, or for other staff? Or, because I was, okay?
Well, I, yeah, I just have an overall sort of baseline question, which is I know how much work has been done on the blade signs, and I know how much work is being done by our Economic Development Committee to support our local businesses. And, and you know, the town has funded a number of different initiatives, a consultant to create a Special Improvement District. The focus of a lot of the resiliency work that the town has done has been to provide grants for our local businesses, and I know that they're in extreme distress. And so I guess I, I'm a bit plumbed to see that I, I'm wondering, this seems like such an anachronism and such a, I'm, I'm just perplexed as to why, how this decision came to be because it seems to be completely at odds with where, you know, with our attempt to try to help our merchants and with, I thought the impulse behind the, I know that there were a number of businesses, including, for example, Cool Vines, that went out of business before COVID, and they specifically cited the municipality's unwillingness to allow blade signs. And they had businesses in other towns in New Jersey where they felt that the blade sign made a big difference. So I just am wondering if someone could shed some light on, this seems like a peculiar direction.
Yeah, and I was going to ask if, if the Chair of the HPC, Mrs. Capizoli, had been here tonight, I was going to ask her to talk about it, but since she's not here, maybe Elizabeth could give us a sense of how the discussion went at HPC.
Sure, would you like some answers to that now?
Yeah, I think, I think it'd be good for the board to know why the variance was dropped for the blades.
I think specifically, Elizabeth, if you could answer
Yes.
this question. You know, what was the discussion around the blade sign particularly?
Elizabeth, I'm going to swear you in if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that testimony about to give the truth?
I do. David, I'm sorry, my internet was going in and out, so I didn't actually hear everything, but I heard what Ms. Sacks' question was, so I assumed that yours was related to her comment.
Yeah, I was just encouraging you to answer her question, not necessarily give a summary of the entire HPC, but.
So what happened is when the commission had reviewed the signage application that came in, it came with two signage variances, one which was the additional wall-mounted sign, which based on to the municipal driveway, which is the north side of the building. And the second one was the blade sign that was on Witherspoon Street. As part of their application, they also were two, which were on the front, which had the signage on the balance, and one that also based on to the driveway. So when the commission was reviewing this application, they felt that it was in excess for him to be asking for both. And when they talked with the applicant about, they asked to just choose one, and the response was that he clearly preferred the one on the wall, and he was willing to relinquish the one on the, the blade sign. It was not, it was just the comment they had made, and it was offered. So I had no idea if that actually went through as far as a submission to the Planning Board or not, but again, HPC is advisory, and they do make advisory comments to the Board of Jurisdiction. So that was their comment on that.
Yeah, and I, I'll just echo and say that aligns with my recollection as well. They didn't have a problem with the blade sign as a blade sign. They just had a problem with the quantity, the overall quantity of this.
Yes. Yeah.
And does the applicant feel comfortable with, does, with, with where the situation is now? And I'm wondering whether the applicant feels that, that the, and whether, I'm wondering how our staff and the applicant feel about whether this is a reasonable compromise, whether it will, whether it, you know, would potentially caused some additional, well, I, I'd rather than frame the question, I would just like to hear what, yeah, Michael?
Yeah, I just want to clarify why I brought it up in the first place. I checked the notice, and the most recent notice that the applicant submitted was for the one variant. So what's before you tonight is for the northerly wall, the wall painted sign that you'll hear about in a few minutes. So that's what's before you tonight. We didn't notice for the blade sign, so you can't vote on that tonight. Why, the reason why I wanted to flag this is because I think we all need to get on the same page on the municipal side. You know, we did this new ordinance to endorse and encourage projecting signs. So I think we all need to agree that it is not excessive to have a projecting sign because we just did an ordinance to add them to the toolkit that merchants have to promote their businesses. So that's, I wanted to make that statement clear.
But in this, sorry, go ahead, Tim.
No, no, I'm sorry, you hit the floor.
I'm just, I'm a little confused. So, so, so are we, is, do you feel, Michael, that this is, do you feel like having the two signs would be excessive?
No, I didn't, I didn't feel that way at all, but the fact is tonight, and I think it was a gracious move on the part of the applicant, listening to the concerns of the Historic Preservation Commission, they chose to go with one of the two variants requests, and that's what's before you tonight. I would just like, in the future, I don't think projecting signs should be thought of as excessive because we purposely did an ordinance very recently to add them to what merchants can have. So
Yeah.
I just want to clarify that.
I, I just want to pipe in again, in defense of HPC, they were actually quite supportive of the applicant, and it wasn't a question of one blade sign being too many. You know, it was four signs total. It was two facade signs, the projecting sign and the sign, the mural sign on the side of the building. And it's, I mean, I would have been fine if they approved them all, but that they were, they were supportive of the business's need for visibility, they're supportive of projecting signs. They took an active role, actually, in helping craft the projecting sign or and I, you know, I'm, I think it was a fair discussion that was had at that meeting.
Jerry, I don't know, for the record, if you want to clarify that we can only consider signage that's being asked for, the variances that were noticed this evening, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. Yeah, one has to specifically notice variances.
Thank you. So I think we're ready for staff. I think that was everything from staff, Mr.?
Tim has his hand up. Tim, Tim has his hand up.
Thank you. I, I, Michael, if you could refresh my memory during the discussion of, of blade signs, which I fully support and would support in this case, there was discussion, and I don't know where we landed, about some sort of calculation of the total amount of signage that one business could have. And it's, it strikes me in this case that this is, I don't like to use the word unique, but it's, it's an unusual sort of placement. There aren't many situations like this in the downtown, but did we ever, I know it was discussed, talking about a total number of, total square footage or whatever measurement we discussed?
No, it, you're allowed a certain, certain square footage for the projecting sign.
Okay.
So I, I just wanted to say that I think Council President Cohen made a really good point. This is sort of a unique situation because they are in effect, if it's granted, the variance this evening, they will have more signage than they normally would have been allowed under the code. And it's an interesting site because it looks like a corner site, even though it isn't, so it's highly visible. So I think what's being proposed really takes good advantage of the physical situation that's there in terms of this northerly wall that, that's quite visible. Some, maybe this isn't as bad a situation where, you know, the merchant's not going to have a projecting sign, but I just wanted to wave a little red flag that, you know, we worked very hard on this ordinance, so I want all of us to be behind it. That was sort of the message I was trying to make.
So maybe we could just encourage the applicant if, in the future, you know, the economic climate considered, continues the way it is, and he feels like the additional sign might make a big difference that he, you know, we might encourage him to come back and, you know, not consider this the end of the, of the sign saga, so to speak.
Can you guys hear me? Yes.
You're a little soft. Need to pump it up a little bit, Louise.
Well, and I
Crank it up to 11.
Move my device, maybe it's better, my angle is different anyway. I think we should go ahead and hear from the applicant. With, with, I, I think everything that's been said is, has, is worth having heard and points well taken and all of that, but let's, let's hear from the applicant. Who is representing?
That would be Deborah Carpenter. She's the corporate attorney, and Mr. Pronell, the applicant, they're both present.
Okay.
Hi, this is Deborah Carpenter. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Great, hi. Good evening. Yes, as Carrie said, I'm representing the applicant in connection with the application for the variance. As several people have mentioned, Ted Pronell is, in fact, the person who was, who's most knowledgeable, who filed the applicant, application, and will speak to it now. So I'd like to turn it over to Ted to answer any questions, give you more information and answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Pronell, could you raise your right hand? You swear or affirm the testimony about to give the truth?
You're muted.
Oh, muted?
No, Ted, Ted is muted. Mr. Pronell is muted.
I do. Okay, I'm going to please state your full name and spell your last name.
Our full name is Thaddeus Pronell. Last name is spelled P R O N E L.
Okay. And do you have an address?
On the application, I used a business address, which is 17 Witherspoon Street. My home address is 6530 Upper York Road, New Hope, Pennsylvania.
Okay, thank you.
Right ahead, Mr. Pronell.
So in brief, we felt that, the discussion with the HPC, that we were in agreement that the blade sign, painted sign, and the existing front facade sign could be a little excessive. We proposed a blade sign because we knew of the new ordinance, but, and we would have wanted the blade sign if we were a building that was, say, a row house with neighbors on either side, but since we are sort of a corner location with the alley, we felt that the visibility on the big blank wall with a painted sign, you know, would be much better in terms of announcing the business as opposed to a blade sign because when one is walking up and down Witherspoon Street, I believe our storefront is rather prominent, and we have large display windows, so customers and pedestrians walking can tell what the store is, plus we have the painted sign right over the entrance, so it's rather visible. Blade sign would have been nice for visibility from further down Witherspoon Street, in the corner of Nassau. But having this big blank wall on the alley was so visible as you come down the street from the north, we felt that it would make a much better presentation than a blade sign. So we were in agreement with HPC that the blade sign was a little excessive for this location.
Thank you.
And also, I just wanted to add one other thing, the idea of painting the sign in the sort of an antique gold style paint, we felt was subtle and give it, you know, the facade, a little bit less of a blank wall, and as, as opposed to installing like dimensional letters, we felt this was just a little bit, we were downplaying the, the idea of a huge sign on the side of the building. We also were in agreement to reduce the size of, of the sign itself, so it's not as large as we originally proposed it to be.
Okay. Are there other, are there questions for the applicant? I'm sure you've heard and taken to heart the encouragement to reconsider the blade sign if you find your enhanced signage isn't quite enhanced enough.
Yes, yes, I appreciate that.
Okay, good. Well, seeing no questions or, oh, Mr. Quinn?
Just a comment that I, I love the blue, the shade of blue that you painted your doors and entrance, entranceway. It's really nice.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate it. I don't, I don't know, Mr. Quinn, if you saw when we first painted the storefront, it was electric blue and
Yeah, no, I, I
We toned it down quite a bit.
I noticed this, and I, I thought it was, it was a lot warmer and, and
Yeah, it was, I was quite shocked because it wasn't, you know, in the paint chip, it wasn't that bright.
You, you were shocked from the electric blue?
Yes. Good one, yeah.
Who says Planning Board can't be fun?
We are just a who, aren't we? Okay. Well, good, this looks like a slam dunk, then. Would someone like to make a motion?
Ms. Chair, Madam Chair, would you like to open it to the public just?
Oh, of course. Thank you. Are there, are, well, I will open this meeting now to comments and questions from the public. Are there people waiting, Mr. Cohen?
There are. We should give them, we should give them a chance.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. So seeing none, I will close the meeting to public comment right now and entertain a motion.
A move approval.
And just to elaborate on what that is, that's minus site plan approval with the variance for the wall sign. There are two aspects to that. That's a second sign, which is not permitted, and this, and the size sealed is non-conforming, correct? Derek, is that correct? You're, you're
It's not a permitted sign, so it's, it's not, there's no conforming size for sign that's not permitted.
Okay, and if you could, if you could raise your right hand, you swear or affirm the testimony you just gave and will give, will be the truth?
Yes, sir.
Just one.
Thanks.
Now, I know the, the Historic Preservation Commission had suggested that this little sign indicating bicycle parking should be, they recommended it be removed. Does the board want to make that a condition?
Nobody? Does the applicant have a problem with it?
I don't personally have a problem with it. I think the discussion at the board was that it would cause a little bit more visual clutter than necessary because I believe there is another bicycle parking sign that's, if I'm not mistaken, mounted on a pole, but I'm not sure.
Elizabeth, do you recall that discussion?
Yes, I believe there are two, and they did say that they felt it was redundant, and they believed initially when the bicycle rack was placed there that they wanted to notify the public where it was, but since now it's been there for a while, they felt it was not necessary, and it also gave the applicant an opportunity to center his sign better on that wall. to center his sign better on that wall.
Good. So yes, that sounds like a common sense condition.
That's the only condition I have, Madam Chair.
Um, so Mr. Quinn, uh, the approval is their second. Mr. Cohen, seconds. Um, Kerry, will you call the roll, please?
Thank you. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sax?
Yes.
Mr. Tex Arney?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
And Derek, just, just for clarification, we're on one of the memos that said twenty square feet is permitted thirty-one square feet. That really doesn't apply, so it's just a one variance for a wall sign where.
You get one sign on of twenty square feet for a facade sign, and if you have a corner, you would get, you could have a second sign, but the two signs can only equal twenty square feet.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Mr. La Place?
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, first, I wanted to thank Mr. Purnell for his investment in Princeton. I mean, particularly at this extremely difficult time for retail. It, it really is wonderful for Princeton to have a great retailer like this, also making an investment in the appearance of their building and a historic building within our central historic district. And I also am lucky enough to uh, live in Westfield where he has another store and did a magnificent restoration of a very significant building, also in the heart of the downtown. So you really, you really made a great commitment to New Jersey and I just want firstly, thank you for it.
Well, we love both communities. Um, and, and I have to say that with Westfield, um, I can't take all the credit. Our landlord, um, uh, Andrew Esman was very instrumental in getting that building back to the original state. It did turn out wonderful.
It's beautiful.
Yeah.
Well, thanks, Michael. I appreciate your bringing that up and um, that's uh, great to know about both locations. Thank you, Mr. Purnell.
Thank you.
Um, uh, and I guess you get to sign off.
All right, great. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amelia.
Bye-bye.
Bye. Um, the next application is Pearl LIHT Urban Renewal. This is preliminary and final major site plan at one hundred Bennett Road, block five zero zero two, lot four. File number P twenty twenty dash eight eight two P. Um, the deadline for action is um, January twelfth. Um, I just want to, before we um, get underway, note that because we have the ordinance referral also on the agenda after this item, um, what I would like to do is um, put a a, a hard stop at about ten o'clock for our work related to the Pearl application so that we have plenty of time to um, hear about and discuss the ordinance referral, which is a stormwater ordinance. So um, I hope that's okay with everybody. I just don't want to get, you know, jammed up for time and um, we are not obligated um, under law or MOU or anything else to conclude with the Pearl um, application discussion tonight. So um, with that, I will ask Michael to take it from here.
Thank you. Um, this application is for Pearl Urban Renewal. It's preliminary and final major site plan approval. This is.
Michael, again, if you could raise your right hand, you swear or affirm the testimony about to give be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed, improved publication and service are in order and the board has jurisdiction.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
This is the companion development proposal to the Avalon Bay Fanit proposal that you recently reviewed and approved um, in our redevelopment area on Fanit Road. Uh, before you tonight is a proposal on a portion about a little, almost three acres, actually closer to two acres portion of existing lot four and block fifty-five oh-two um, for a senior restricted age housing development of eighty units. Four-story building. The site is on Fanit Road along the westerly side of Fanit Road. Um, and it's um, surrounded by office and research facilities to the west and north. Uh, residential along the Turhune Road corridor and then to the east is the Avalon Bay uh, proposal of development that we recently reviewed and beyond that, the Governor's Lane Residential Neighborhood. Um, the, I don't want to take up a lot of time because we don't have a lot of time tonight and I know that the applicant has a detailed presentation ready. Um, but the um, project site is within the RSA zone, which is for uh, senior housing and it was a, uh, it's a permitted use and it was called for in our redevelopment plan for Fanit Road. So it is consistent with our redevelopment planning. And um, I just wanted to note at the beginning that the site, which as you may recall, is currently the site of um, empty office buildings. Two empty office buildings and surface parking lots has, one of the reasons why it became the subject of a redevelopment plan is because the municipality felt it was obsolete in terms of form and use and that um, both the Avalon Bay and this Pearl development are much more um, viable proposals for the site and will add a lot to the community in terms of housing opportunities in terms of Princeton meeting, um, aspects of its fair share of housing, affordable housing requirements for the state. And also that it will bring a lot of, of benefits to the community in terms of housing opportunities and the diversity of housing types and being located generally in a central part of the municipality and close to uh, transit and other um, shops and services that will, the residents can take advantage of. So um, I think that's about what I need to say as an introduction. And um, Chair, if you want to hand it to the applicant.
Sure, um, before we hear from the applicant, Mr. Purcell, do you have anything to add or would you just, uh, do you want to?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I think that.
Jim, if you could raise your right hand, but you swear or affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth.
I do.
So sworn or affirmed.
Madam Chair, I think uh, we'll allow the applicant to uh, do their presentation and any questions that come up on an engineering basis. So.
Okay.
At the time.
Right. I, I, I know you had a fair number of detailed comments and a section on conditions, so we'll, we'll jump off that bridge when we get to it. Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, I actually did just want to ask Mr. Purcell a quick question, which is, I believe that this is a joint stormwater uh, facility that's serving both the Pearl and the Avalon site. So essentially, we've already reviewed the stormwater. Is that correct?
Since we have reviewed the stormwater, um, stormwater management system, they are managing some of the stormwater runoff from, for quality and quantity within the site. But all of the stormwater that discharges from the site connects to the joint system, uh, which is then treated by the two basins downstream.
Okay, but there may be some items for discussion on the.
There are some and, and um, the applicant does have some, some things to present regarding um, their um, bio swells and um, potential use of um, pervious pavement.
Okay.
Great. So on behalf of the applicant, we have.
That would be Madam Chair, Richard Hoff of the law firm of Bizgar Hoff. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant. Just for the record, technically, the applicant is Princeton LIHTC Urban Renewal LLC. Um, as, as everybody has already commented, we know it is Pearl. Um, Mr. La Place has done a very nice summary of how we have gotten here. Uh, this project represents a very uh, ambitious and uh, frankly, unique private-public partnership for the construction of affordable housing in Princeton. Uh, as is indicated, this is an eighty-unit project that will provide housing for uh, seniors, those over the age of fifty-five, all units within the project. Um, although it sits on a lot that's approximately two point one acres, this board probably knows it better as Lot B, which was constantly referred to during the Avalon Bay application that was concluded uh, earlier this month. Um, in that respect, and as was pointed out by Mr. Cohen, um, and Mr. Purcell, some of the issues that were related to the Avalon application or, or have been covered with respect to this application, some of the stormwater, some of the traffic. Uh, so in that respect, uh, we hope we can be expeditious with our testimony and focusing really on the issues that are unique to this Pearl project. Um, we, as again, Mr. La Place indicated, this is a product of a redevelopment plan. That redevelopment plan was specific in terms of laying out the vision for this project, which we adhere to, we believe, uh, very closely. Uh, even with that being said, though, there are a few variances associated with the project that I wanted to just get out for purposes of the record so we can be thinking about those as you hear the testimony. Um, the first relates to the uh, bedroom size within the project. Our architect will speak more detailed to that. However, is a, a unique provision in Princeton zoning code, not the redevelopment plan that prescribes the size of bedrooms for multifamily projects. And um, we may fall a little below that for, with respect to some of the bedrooms, so we are calling out that variance just to make sure that uh, we're covered for the project. Um, there's actually another provision in the Princeton zoning code that talks about the banking of parking. You're going to hear tonight that while we could meet the parking standard as prescribed by the redevelopment plan, um, we are proposing to free up more green space on the project and provide actually less parking because we don't believe, given the unique use here, that being senior affordable, that you're going to drive the need for the type of parking. So we're proposing to bank. You'll hear more about that from our engineer uh, as well as our traffic consultant if necessary. Related to that is a provision, uh, a de minimis exception for the residential site improvement standards. That again relates to the parking. Uh, the residential site improvement standards that this board well knows dictates how parking standards, how uh, different construction standards for residential uh, construction is uh, established for the state of New Jersey, irrespective of planning boards, and they set parking standards. And we're slightly below those uh, those requirements, but again, in connection with the redevelopment plan, so technically a de minimis exception is required. Uh, and finally, the final variance detail is related to signage. Uh, the redevelopment plan allows for two freestanding signs for the project. We have a third, but as you'll see, think it's a rather de minimis type of variance, uh, and are asking for that third sign, which we view more as a wayfarer sign, but technically under the redevelopment plan, it would require a variance. So that's all I'm going to say because what I say doesn't matter. I'm going to turn it over to my experts and I'd like to start if I could, uh, with Mr. Jay Cruz. He's our civil engineer and we'll get us started with an overview of the project.
Good evening, everybody.
Go ahead.
You swear or affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed, please state your full name, spell your last name and give your address, please.
Sure. Name is Jay Cruz. Last name is spelled K R U S E. Address is E S C Consultants Incorporated, one hundred Willowbrook Road, suite two hundred, Freehold, New Jersey.
Thank you.
All right, Jay, if you could, for the board, uh, your professional and educational background, please?
Sure. I uh, graduated in nineteen ninety-three from Penn State University with a bachelor of science degree in civil engineering. In nineteen ninety-eight, obtained my professional engineering license in the state of New Jersey. Uh, since that time, I've been practicing as a professional engineer in responsible charge for site design for private and public clients, including residential and affordable projects throughout the state. Uh, currently serve as the regional director of engineering for E S C Consultants in New Jersey, handling all of their land development services throughout the state. Um, and I've been approved by multiple awards across the state, over a couple hundred as a professional expert in the site civil engineering and land development.
And your licenses remain current in the state of New Jersey?
That's correct, yes.
Um, Madam Chair, members of the board, I'd offer, uh, Mr. Cruz is a qualified expert in the field of civil engineering.
We accept your qualifications. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, uh, Mr. Cruz, uh, you're familiar with this project?
Yes, I am.
And you are the engineer primarily responsible for preparing the site plan, correct?
Yes, I am.
All right. If you could, uh, take the board members of the public through, just walk us through the project. Let's start with the surrounding area and work our.
Sure, um.
And, and if I may interrupt it for housekeeping purposes, oh, Rick, I take it that this is a set of exhibits that you're offering of in evidence and you've pre-marked them, correct?
That's correct. I apologize, Jerry. We, we submitted a packet of exhibits. We've taken the liberty of pre-marking.
Sure.
We'll identify them as we go along, but um, they've been previously provided to Ms. Phil.
Yep.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. They were provided yesterday. I did not upload them today. Sorry.
From?
Okay, then I will um, get started with the um, overview of the, the project. Um, Mr. La Place went through an excellent summary of the site itself, how it fits into the overall Fanit Road redevelopment plan and the surrounding properties. I'll just give you a brief um, overview of what we have uh, presented here with exhibit A one, which is an overall uh, aerial exhibit of the existing Fanit Road redevelopment area, which includes the Pearl development and the previously approved Avalon Bay development. Um, you heard uh, Rick mention the lots A, B and C that I'm sure you went through in much detail, uh, during the Avalon Bay presentation, uh, but just for reorientation. Um, the lot, uh, C portion of Avalon Bay is the um, area of the main access uh, to the, the project, um, which is to the right of the screen. I'm not sure if you can see my arrow. Um, that was left on the screen. Um, it's just a, a dot that's popping up. This will make sure everybody can see what I have uh, drawn on the screen. It's going through a, through Lara's.
Yes, we can see that.
Okay. And then that is the lot C, which is Avalon Bay to the, uh, basically to the north of the project site. Um, as you come, lot C is to what we would call the, um, geez, sorry. Lot C is to the all right. To the south of the, the project site, um, which is lot A, as referenced in the Avalon Bay development. To the bottom of the exhibit where it says Avalon Bay parcel, that is uh, existing uh, commercial and uh, office use and to the north of the project, which is to the top of the exhibit is um, existing commercial and office use which fronts on North Irisen Street. Uh, the subject of our application today is essentially the um, is the lot B portion. Sorry, Lara, this um, the arrows and uh, the presentation are not what I am accustomed to in the Zoom window that I've used before, so I apologize for um, what is going on here with the screen. So um, the center of the project is the subject of our application.
Jay, do you want me to take back control and you can just use the Zoom um, markers? It might be easier.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, um, I'm, I'm having an issue because the, uh, the um, the menu with the Zoom, the markers that um, typically come up when you have the screen control aren't coming up on my screen, so that's why I was trying to control.
You want to give me control back and then you can use the markers just in Zoom?
Well, yeah, you can have control back, but I, the, the, the med, the um, the menu for the markers in Zoom aren't coming up in mind when you have control of it either, so I um, I'm not. Yeah, that's, that's the issue. It's like typically in every other Zoom meeting, I'm sorry, everyone at the board, there's been a dropdown with annotate and I can annotate, but for whatever reason, when you're using your screen, it's just not popping up. So it's a technical glitch as we discussed at the beginning of the meeting, so I.
Well, let me try and do this one more time and see if it gets any better. Um,
And if, what I.
What I can do is try and, oh, yeah, I don't have the annotates either.
Yeah. So what I could do, if nobody wants to hear me talk face, with my face, I can pull up these exhibits on my screen and share my screen and I would think the annotation would come up. So um, if that helps out, then I could try that as a, a separate as a separate track. So let me just, um, if you just hold on for a second and see if I can get to.
And, and Jay, while you're doing that, uh, Jerry, if we could, why don't we get, you, you've heard Lara speak. So given the testimony, why don't we get her sworn and identified?
Yeah, I actually didn't, wasn't going to because she was just having colloquy with the, another witness really testified, but that's fine. If you could raise your hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed, please state your full name and spell your last name.
Lara, L A R A, S C H W A G E R, Lara Schwager.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so let me see if I can get this working. I apologize. Let's see what happens here if I. Okay, so now I have my screen shared. Are you able to see the exhibits uh, with the title of the overall exhibit in my screen?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. All right. And. All right. Okay. So let me. Scroll down. And now we have the exhibit up and. All right. Sorry. And for whatever reason on this, the annotation screen's not coming up on this either. I apologize. I don't know what is, uh, happening this evening, but I guess it's twenty twenty and, um. I'm not sure why the annotation screen isn't coming up. It's come up on every Zoom meeting I've ever done. Except for, uh, tonight's hearing. So I apologize. So, um, let, let me just go through some descriptions and see if I can, um. Take you through what, uh, I have here this evening.
Jay, in the, in the tool function of the PDF. You should have, there you go. You should have some marking tools. You probably should be able to use those.
Yeah.
Try it again. I just made a change to the sharing, uh, component. Try it again.
All right, let's try just stopping the sharing. And then try doing it again. Say, sorry, I apologize. And there were, and you're pressed for time as well. So. Let's see if I can share my screen. And. Now I get to exhibit up, but, um, yeah, no annotation tools through Zoom. So chalk it up to. Let's just try and see if I can get a, um. See if I can just get a, um. A symbol or something that'll get you to where we're going. All right. So learn something new on Zoom. Doesn't always work the same for every exhibit. I apologize.
Yeah, I believe Kerry just sent it to all the, uh, members.
Okay.
Ah, okay.
Uh, all right. So then with, um. The overall project, as, as Mr. La Place had described, um, the focus of our project is this area in the middle. Which is lot B. That is essentially the, uh, subject application of, of the, the Pearl site, which is basically roughly two point one six acres in size, as referenced previously. Um, I won't, the, the site itself in that area of the existing office complex is mainly comprised of. Um, existing impervious pavement for the parking that service the office complex. And it's surrounded by some perimeter woods and lawn areas, which make up the rest of the site. So access to that portion of the property is essentially off of Thanet Circle. And the existing access drive to that portion of the office complex is basically the same location as our proposed office, office, uh, proposed drive. To the Pearl site, which I'll reference as we go through the more detailed exhibit, which is on, uh, A2. So switching to A2, uh, hopefully everybody can see this is the, the actual landscape rendering of the proposed Pearl project. I'll go through the specifics of what we're proposing, uh, throughout the site, starting with the, uh, building itself. As you can see where it says main lobby entry towards the bottom of the exhibit and highlighted in, um. Light tan, that is the subject of the application, which is a four-story apartment building with AD, age-restricted units. It's located again along the southern border of that lot B that you've heard, uh, so much about between the Avalon Bay presentation and ours this evening. The building includes a mix of one-bedroom and two-bedroom apartment units. And it's, uh, roughly eighty-three thousand four hundred square feet in gross building area. Uh, there are two external sitting congregation areas at the front and rear of the building. Uh, if you look to the right where it says entry terrace, that is the, uh, front sitting area. And if you look to the left of the exhibit in the, uh, lower left corner. That is the clubroom terrace, which is also an outdoor sitting congregation area. There is, uh, one, also one exterior community garden along the western boundary, which is essentially to the, uh, top. Uh, middle portion of the exhibit. And that area, uh, is also there to serve, uh, as a, uh, active recreation. Uh, amenity space for the residents of the, the, uh, site. Uh, also included, uh, in the, um, overall project is a parking and circulation area for residents to, to park. Uh, main access, as I mentioned, from the site is from Thanet Road. Uh, we have one access point, which is essentially in the same location as the existing access point, uh, to the office complex that exists now. Uh, the, uh, all, same will also have a secondary access. At the north, uh, portion of the property, which will connect into the existing driveways. From the Avalon Bay development, which is at the, noted at the top of the, um. Site. Hopefully you can see my little cursor arrow. I'm not sure if, I hope that's showing up on your screen. Uh, and also, the secondary access will provide two means of ingress, egress to the site in case of emergency services. Or for deliveries and trash pickup. Uh, based off the exhibits we provided as part of the application process, the ample circulations is allowed, provided throughout the site for fire. Uh, service and emergency response vehicles and also garbage truck, uh, pickup. You'll also note on this overall exhibit that we don't have any designated exterior waste, uh, or trash enclosure. Uh, for this type of development, uh, waste and recycling are collected internally in a central room. They're compacted and then wheeled to the curb for typical residential type pickup. In large residential containers, which is in the area of this, uh, oversized concrete, uh, sidewalk area, which. It allows ample room for storage of those containers. Uh, and those containers do not, they stay out there for days. They are put out during the scheduled pickup day, so that they're just like any residential type, uh, pickup for the rest of the community. Also, as part of the overall, uh, pave circulation and, and parking area is the, uh, parking itself. As Rick had mentioned earlier, uh, the ordinance and the redevelopment plan call for, uh, a one space for every one apartment unit. Uh, which would be eighty spaces in this instance, and the parking layout that you see on the plan presented here complies and provides the eighty spaces. Uh, that are necessary per the redevelopment plan and also includes for, uh, a handicap accessible parking spaces as well along the front portion of. The building. From other projects that we've done, uh, understanding that, uh, bank parking is a, a preference potentially in the community. Uh, from other projects that we've done for Pearl, uh, throughout, uh, New Jersey, especially senior apartments. Uh, we're finding that the real typical parking demand for a development type is roughly point seven, point six, seven spaces per unit. Which in this case would basically require sixty-seven spaces. So with that type of actual demand, there is an opportunity to, uh, potentially bank some of the parking spaces that we show. Along the, uh, what we'll say western border, which is the top of the exhibit A2. The remainder of the parking area is serviced by twenty-four foot wide drive aisles, which provides, uh, two-way access throughout the development for any residents or visitors to the site itself. Also, with the parking area and sidewalk chemistry in areas throughout the site, we're providing. Lighting for all those areas in accordance with the ordinance requirements. Uh, LED lighting will be provided for all lighting fixtures, uh, with downlit type of, uh, fixtures. That will reduce glare and also have softened, uh, type of display versus a typical, uh, bulb with high-pressure sodium or mercury vapor type. Lamps. Uh, the fixtures themselves will be colonial type mounted at roughly fifteen feet high. So it gives you more of a residential feel instead of higher twenty to twenty-five foot standards, which you custom more towards a retail office. Space, which is currently out there in the existing condition. Uh, also, it was noted in one of the professionals letters that, uh, our lighting illumination levels at some of the property lines, uh, is currently over the, uh, zero point five foot candle requirement. And as we go through, uh, the resolution compliance process, if approved here this evening, will reduce those. Illumination levels to comply with the ordinance requirements. Another item that is also to be lit on the site is the existing entrance sign. If you can follow my cursor, hopefully you can see it. It is at the entrance. That is connecting to Thanet Road. That's a designated, uh, monument sign that will display the entrance. Information for Pearl, the name and the developer. Uh, and there'll also be another sign, which will be located at Turhune and Thanet Road, which is a common sign shared by both Avalon. And Pearl, which will have a moniker for Pearl on that sign as well. And as Rick mentioned earlier, since those are technically two signs for Pearl. There's a third, uh, smaller sign that the developer is proposing, which would be near the entrance way. Uh, which would designate the, uh, wayfinding to the management office. For folks to make sure that they're traveling to the right portion of the building for any type of management services necessary. And this sign isn't a large sign. It's about two and a half feet wide by one and a half feet tall. And it's roughly to be located about two and a half feet off the ground on a couple of metal posts. So, uh, it's not a large monument sign, just type of typical wayfinding sign for, uh, office markings. Uh, for this site, since it is part of an existing developed office complex, there are current, uh, existing public utilities within Thanet Road. Uh, there's existing public sanitary sewer service with an existing inch main in Thanet Road and also existing ten-inch water line, which runs. Along the southern border through Thanet Road. Uh, the water service is provided by New Jersey America Water Company. Uh, if you look towards the front portion, we're proposing connections into those public utilities. Uh, which will service the building and have, provide ample capacity for sewer collection and potable water demand and fire service. Uh, lastly, uh, with the project is Rich, uh, Rick touched on earlier, and as Mr. Cohen had mentioned, the store and management. Uh, as part of the project itself, uh, we will be providing water quality treatment on the site. Uh, basically to handle the existing additional paved impervious surface for the Pearl project. Uh, what we're proposing, uh, to provide a portion of water quality treatment are two bi-retention slash rain garden areas. Located at the end of the, the parking aisles. Um, if you follow my cursor. They're the larger grass areas, green grass area shown at the ends of the, the parking aisles, which are perpendicular to the building. Um, also, in addition to the two bi-retention areas, we're also proposing a manufactured treatment device to also supplement. And provide additional water quality, uh, for the site itself. And, and we also note, and as Rick had mentioned earlier, that the environmental commission had, uh, or Jim, I'm sorry, made, uh, note earlier that. The environmental commission had, uh, suggested that we also incorporate some, uh, porous impervious pavement. Into the site designed to also aid in water quality, which we will do in, uh, considering doing some of the parking stalls. Located throughout the development, uh, to help aid in water quality as well. Um, as we touched on previously, uh, the Avalon Bay development in the area of lot A has the existing regional. Detention basins that will be utilized to handle store and management and stormwater flow from this site to meet the rate reduction requirements that are necessary for the overall redevelopment area. So there's no new stormwater management, uh, facilities provided onsite for rate reduction because it's all handled by the regional basins. And that was covered in the Avalon Bay development. The only, uh, remaining stormwater management, uh, feature would be the existing collection, the proposed collection system of inlets and pipings. That will basically connect into the main, uh, head trend, uh, main collector system for the Avalon Bay development, which will direct all the flow that's collected from the Pearl site to those regional basins. And with that, and despite the hiccups and throw me off my game with not being able to use my cursors and, and arrows, I apologize for the, the. The confusion and hopefully you're able to follow. Um, and I will wrap up there and, uh, move on to Rick to hand off to the next professional.
Uh, thanks. Just a couple of quick follow-ups, Jay. Um, on the sign that we're seeking the variance for, we, well, the wayfinding, uh, wayfinding sign as it relates to the office building. That's not in any way illuminated, correct?
That's correct.
It's just a little, uh, saw, a sign that lets people know where to go for the, uh, management office inside the building?
Yeah, that's correct. And, and it would be illuminated by any of the overall site lighting for the parking or pedestrian circulation areas.
Okay. And you indicated the stormwater management plan with respect to Avalon Bay. You're familiar with that plan. That's correct.
Yes, I, yes, I'm familiar with it.
You performed the, the analysis with respect to the regional collection system?
That I'm very familiar with. Yes, I did do the analysis.
Um, and finally, one of the questions that, it popped up on a couple of the review letters dealt with pedestrian access through the parking lot getting to the building. Um, can you discuss that very briefly in terms of, you know, I, I've arrived at the site, I'm going to work my way to the front entrance. There were some suggestions about perhaps crosswalks or some sort of markings, but is that practical, given the layout of the parking lot as it's configured?
For, uh, the layout we had here, it was particularly set up to take advantage of the, the shape of the site, which. In this case, to make sure that we're meeting the parking requirement that's required, that's, uh, presented in the redevelopment plan. To, to gain more parking, it's more efficient to have the parking laid out in a, uh, be a basically perpendicular to the face of the building. Uh, that way, we're going to get more parking spaces in a condensed area. If we did it horizontal, we could have more aisles. And bigger islands at the end, which may eat into the allowable parking space and would push us back into maybe having to develop the potential banked area with parking, just to service development. Also, with this configuration, it's set up similar to what you experience in any typical retail commercial type development where. Uh, there's a lot more traffic than this type of development, where you have people walking out along the aisles with the flow of traffic going up and down towards the building. And as you get towards the building, folks are going to funnel through most likely and in two of the affordable, um, the, uh. The handicap parking stalls and the straight areas that are open there and use the sidewalk along the front of the building to traverse to the main entrance point. Instead of everyone walking down the aisles and gravitating over to the main entrance that leads out. To the curved area where the, uh, black car is shown on the exhibit. That'd be more for just a, a typical pickup drop-off location. So it is for us, uh, the layout was to be the most efficient for parking, to have the folks who are, are coming to the site. As residents walk with traffic along the aisle towards the building and able to basically make it across one. Essentially just cross one main drive aisle as they get close to the building, then several, which would be horizontal, leading away from the building.
And, uh, we've mentioned the redevelopment plan, but I was remiss in asking, um, when you talk about height setbacks, coverage. All of those bulk standards are set forth in the redevelopment plan. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And do we seek variance from any of the provisions within the redevelopment plan with the exception of the signage issue that we discussed?
No, but we comply with all bulk standards, uh, other than, again, requesting the sign variance.
Okay. Um, Madam Chair, I have nothing affirmative, uh, additional for Mr. Cruz. Um, certainly he's not going anywhere. The exact questions pop up.
I may go, I may go hide in a hole after the debacle with the others, but I'll be here.
No, no need for that. Um. So, um, can you stop sharing the screen for just a minute?
Yes.
Thanks. Um, are there questions from board members for Mr. Cruz, Mr. O'Donnell, and then Mr. Oakman, and then Mr. Cohen? Did you have your hand up too?
Yeah. Yes. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Um, Mr. Cruz, I just had one question for you. First of all, the, the presentation was fine. Don't worry about that. We've all, we, we've all lived through that and you pulled it off with great aplomb. I do have a question though about, um, you said that the environmental commission had requested additional pervious, uh, pavement. In the parking lot. Did you say that, uh, you were going to, uh. To meet that, uh, that ask or that you were considering it? I wasn't quite clear on that.
We'll, we'll meet that. Yes, we will include, we'll include pervious pavement on the parking stall areas of the parking lot.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Oakman?
Uh, yeah, thanks. This is just a, a maybe a minor follow-up to your last point about the, about the, the pedestrian traffic through the parking lot. Um, and I was just looking at, I mean, you, you, you essentially, you were saying that you come down from those, the rows of cars, you know, towards the building. And then there's, but there's those, there's, there's stormwater retention areas. Which I, I assume are, you know, sort of graded. Um, and I'm, I'm wondering if, I mean, it, it, it sort of looks like maybe those, those become a, a hazard or a, or a barrier. Like you can't walk through them, which is going to, which is going to further move, sort of force pedestrian traffic into some very limited areas. I was just wondering if, and it's a little hard to, to say, say this without the map in front of me, but. Might it be possible to consider a, um, oh, thanks. Like s- some sort of a crosswalk that would kind of go. That would, that would lead you from the parking spaces towards the community garden. And then on to those, on to those sidewalks to get to the main building to kind of avoid you having to, to make it around those, those stormwater swales?
Um, the, the stormwater swales would be graded and have vegetation, so I don't believe anyone will be, um. Looking to traverse those. They'll be a, a foot or so deep. So I don't think it will be attractive for anyone to want to use that as any type of pedestrian access. Um, and folks in these parking conditions are going to flow to the open areas, which are basically. Um, and folks in these parking conditions are going to flow to the open areas, which are basically the, um, the sidewalk that you talked about coming down the aisle closest to the building, and they're going to gravitate towards the open areas and the affordable, it between the, uh, accessible handicaps stalls, which have an eight foot and a five foot wide opening. Everyone's going to gravitate towards those open areas and use the ADA accessible ramps there to uh, make the front sidewalk that Lara has so eloquently drawn, and then gravitate towards the front of the building. So with those two areas already provided, it's already a kind of a wayfinding directional of, okay, there's a sidewalk for the, uh, the left portion of the project that's closest there where Lara is drawing that they can walk to. And then as they come down the aisles, they'll know to gravitate towards the ADA accessible parking areas and the open areas between the cars to, uh, get to that sidewalk area in the front.
Does that address your concern, Mr. Oakman? Do you have any kind of follow-up question or?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I, I think it's, uh, I mean, it, it, it addresses the thinking. I, I, I mean, I, I still think that the, I still think that the, the swales represent like kind of a, a barrier to getting out of the parking to, to the side of the building. But, you know, I mean, I, I've, I've, I've flagged that concern, so, you know, we can move on.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, um, I just wanted to ask Mr. Cruz to, um, reflect a little bit on some of the recommendations from Sprab. I thought several of their suggestions for reconfiguring the sidewalk areas were pretty good. Uh, in particular, how you get from the trash area over to the trash pickup area. They were suggesting a diagonal which would, um, remove distraction from the main entry and also make it a little bit more direct. The jog around the transformer is kind of awkward. I don't know if the transformer has to be in that exact location. And then they also had a suggestion for a more gracious curve, I think, over the end of the building as you approach the circle to, um, encourage people to use crosswalk, uh, at the entryway. And I, I wonder if you could respond to those in particular, uh, suggestions, which I thought were, were useful.
Mr. Cohen, if you don't mind, I, I'd like to take that one because it was one of the points that we wanted to raise at some point. Um, we'd be agreeable if the board were comfortable to, uh, work with Mr. Purcell to, to address those concerns about the sidewalk that were raised in Sprab. We, we agree, some of them make some sense. Um, but we, we weren't sure which ones are the most practical as opposed to some of the others. Um, we weren't, we're gonna move sidewalks just for the sake of moving them, but to the extent they improve circulation, something we'd be willing to consider. And, and our proposal was just gonna leave that to, uh, Mr. Purcell and our professionals to come up with what they think to be the, best layout for the sidewalks, if that's agreeable to the board.
Uh, sure. I trust Mr. Purcell to, uh, get you to do the right thing.
Right, uh, can I just note something? Since we're on.
Heather needs to be sworn in.
Yeah, Heather, if you could raise your right hand, you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth.
I do.
So I swear or affirm.
Um, since we're on, um, you know, I know it's not traffic time, but since we're on, um, the topic of the sidewalk system, that was one of my comments in my traffic letter, um, regarding, um, really the lack of, of continuous pathway, um, within the site and within the parking area. Like if you, if you park in the rear, there's really no like safe way to, to, you have to Miranda through the parking area. So, um, I think it is a good idea if the applicant can work, um, you know, with myself and, and Jim to figure out like a better solution, how to get the pedestrians and the tenants like safely from their, wherever they're parking, you know, to that main entrance. And I'd recommend maybe like a, a diagonal crosswalk where that main entrance is. Um, but yeah, I think that's something that's, that should definitely be discussed further.
We, we'd be happy to do that. We're obviously sensitive, as I know the board is, to unnecessary impervious coverage. So that's, that's something that we were sensitive to in this design as well. But again, I, I think, uh, between our offices, yours, Mr. Purcell, we'll be able to come up with a configuration that, uh, it both safely addresses the issues of safety as well as, uh, not putting too much pavement on unnecessary.
Great. Um, you can stop sharing the screen again for a moment anyway. Are there other questions, um, from board members? Ms. Sax?
Two questions. One, um, I wanted to know how the banked perking, uh, works. Do we need to decide that now or? Sorry. Do we need to decide that now or, um, or how, how does that work? Because I think we, we are definitely interested in that. And then the other thing is just in anything that's discussed in tonight, I wanted to make sure that everyone keeps in mind, um, that, uh, we are talking with the medical group behind, um, this site to, uh, hopefully arrange for another means of egress from the site. So it's just something to keep in mind in terms of, I think that would probably, I mean, Jim, you would know better, but I, if that works out, I think it would go, it would, the interface would be right where that banked parking is.
Not exactly. I didn't really, I, I didn't know we would get into that this evening.
Well, is, I mean, we don't have to get into it, but I, I just don't.
It would be, it would be more on the other side of the maintenance shed, um, from the bank parking.
Okay.
Would be further to the west.
To the west, okay. Well, I, to get into it, I just want to make sure that we don't make any decisions tonight that preclude that from going through.
Um, I see that there's a question in the Q and A. Mr. Muller, did you want to say something?
I just, is, is the bank parking, the location of the bank parking shown in the plans?
Jay, why don't you, why don't we pull up the plans? It, it's not shown now, but Jay can show, Lara, if you could pull the plans back up, and Jay, point with some specificity as to that area where it's proposed to be banked, so everybody is clear on it.
If, um, the, the area along basically what we'll say, if the, the, the property is, the front edge is the building, the rear of the property is where Lara is drawing it, those spaces along there will possibly be able to be banked, um, based off of our understanding of a, the point six seven parking ratio that we experience at other properties of this type of development. So there's 15 spaces in that bay area back there that is, um, drawn, where Lara is drawing the red line, and we could bank those parking spaces i- if the desire of the board was to bank them and, uh, still comply with what we're experiencing in other sites for parking demand.
Would the idea be, as we've done, uh, for other applications, that if you determine there's a need for the bank parking spaces to be, for the parking spaces to be installed where the bank spaces are now, or if the town decides it's necessary, either can make the decision to have some or all of them banked. Is that acceptable, everybody?
Uh, we can have, uh, Lara speak for the applicant because I know she's had discussions with, uh, again, this is a municipally sponsored initiative as well, so I know that, uh, Princeton has, the governing body has a vested interest in this issue. So Lara, if you could, um, speak to this issue of the shared parking and what people can expect in terms of when it would be implemented and who makes the determination as to need?
Right, so we would, the way that we've worked these, again, this is a little bit atypical because it's an affordable housing community, which is different than, you know, a market rate community and the type of financing that it has. Um, if we're going to build the parking, it really does need to be decided, um, before we officially turn over the project and close out the project, because with tax credits, we have to use those dollars within the time period of the project. Um, with that said, uh, we, what we normally do is we'll look at lease up, and if we see for some reason that Princeton has an excessive amount of cars that are coming in, we lease up significantly before, we'll come to the town and say, hey, we think we need to pull the trigger on this. Um, I, I don't foresee it at all in this community, um, especially with the kind of, um, bike use that goes on, the fact that there is, um, bus service that we can get to the community. I, I really don't see that we'll have an issue here, but that decision we would make, um, with the municipality prior to the full closeout of the project.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Texarney.
So, um, I don't know if, uh, this is the point where I, I should have mentioned EV charging stations, but, um, I was just curious if there's any intentions to have EV, EV charging stations and, and still how many? I didn't see that in the staff reports or mention of it.
Yeah, the, the report said that none were proposed, so I think it is a good time to ask whether there's flexibility on that.
We received, we received that con, we saw that comment, um, and we would be agreeable to installing two. Um, again, uh, given that this is municipally sponsored, tax credits are involved, we are sensitive to costs, and given that this is an age-restricted affordable, we're also sensitive to the fact that we, we're not exactly optimistic that you would have a large demand for the charging stations. But with that being said, we think two, uh, is a reasonable compromise for a project of this size.
Um, and when you say two, do you mean two stations that would be able to provide charging for four parking spaces or two spaces?
I believe it was two spaces. That, that's not the question. I, I, that one I wasn't ready for. I, I believe it's just two spaces.
Okay, well, um, oh, yeah, David, you want to?
I, I just want to really support what Zenon is saying. I think, I can't remember if I've had this con- uh, conversation with Lara at some point in the past, but the reality is that used EVs are extremely affordable and that you may well have some residents, um, able to afford electric vehicles. It's, we're not talking about Teslas here. Uh, the first EV that my wife and I got, I think we got for, you know, like $7,000. And it was, had like 6,000 miles on it. It was, um, it was a steal. So, I, I think you might get demand for it, and whether it's two or two charging stations with conduit to possibly add two more or something like that, I think. I just want to encourage, uh, as much as, as seems realistic. Sort of like, once you're running the, the conduit out there and wire out there for two, you know, how much more does another two cost?
It's less, just, just to the upfront, it's, it's less of the upfront cost. Um, I mean, obviously, we'd speak to David, as you know, our agreement with the municipality on the upfront cost. It's more the ongoing costs to the resident and whether they're going to have those dollars to expend on the charging. We wouldn't pay, you know, obviously, the community's not going to pay for the electric to charge those cars. So there would be some kind of swipe system that the residents would have to pay for. So it's not really upfront cost that we're, that, that, that is, is where I think the line is confusing. I think it's really on what these residents can afford, um, on an ongoing basis for the charging.
It's cheaper than gas.
It's a lot cheaper than gas.
So, so again, yep, so again, the short answer is, you know, as you know, Mr. Cohen, that the municipality, um, has the purse on this. And so, you know, I think, um, if you asked me to do four and the municipal, it, it wasn't in our original scope as we talked about. If you asked me to do four and it, it grows in that budget, you know, the municipality can ask me to do it. So I, I, at the moment, we're agreeing to do, I think we can cover two, given what's going on, if we can, we can have that further condition. So I, I think a condition can be that we work with the municipality, um, on the costs, and if it was agreed to, that we would install.
Right. So would we ask you to, do you need for us to ask you tonight, Lara, or, or, because I, 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 I do think we would like you to do four?
I think it's just a condition, Mia, the Sax. So I think it's just, it becomes a condition. And then when the council, when I'm due to come back to you with the final pricing, which is a requirement of my redevelopment agreement after this hearing, I'm due to come back to you with kind of final pricing. And then you can say yea or nay based on what you see there.
Okay.
Now, are we talking about, we talking about four, uh, EV charging stations or charging stations for four spaces?
I think what Zenon had said was two units which have, right, the way it is at the shopping center where there's two, uh, poles, but they each have a, a cord.
So two charging stations for, for four spaces.
Right.
Yeah, that's, I mean, uh, I, I think the, you know, even though the PEC was recommending seven, I think that that's, um, something that, you know, we, we would be agreeable to, um, although I would also a- ask, um, which, you know, isn't too much more intensive is to, to run the conduit for potentially, um, seven spaces. So not install it, but, you know, as you're, you know, making improvements to the sidewalk, you know, just run a pipe essentially to allow for, you know, the installation of potentially, you know, two more stations in the future. Because I think that, you know, what you, you, what, in, for most people, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't sound realistic or reasonable to, to add seven charging stations at this moment. But, you know, in the next 10 years, the state has really aggressive goals to be, you know, getting more EVs on the road. You know, they have a goal to have 330,000 EVs on the road by 2025. I mean, you know, this, this is really something that they're taking very seriously. And I think that the aftermarket for EVs will make them a much more affordable. And, you know, with the, the price of gas changing, and also even right now, in EV owner, owning an EV is actually cheaper in many cases than owning a, a petroleum power car, car.
So, yeah, as I said, you, you can ask us, you, you can put a condition in for whatever you like, as long as it's also conditioned on the governing body approving the cost. So, again, I have no, I have no issue or take, you know, I agree, putting conduits in fairly inexpensive.
Okay, great.
So Zenon, is that seven charging stations then? Uh, we already have two agreements.
No, 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 so, so only two charging stations, so it'd be one more than what they're, you know, already proposing. And it would, uh, provide charging for four spaces, but having conduit to potentially have seven charging spaces.
That would be three more, right, Zenon?
Well, it would be adding essentially two more, but in the future.
Well, three more. You have four, and if you want seven, then you would have three, you would have conduit for three more spaces, right?
Yeah, but I, I guess you could say to, to provide conduit for three more spaces, I think would be reasonable.
So I, yeah, that sounds good, and let's hope the governing body approves it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Um, I remember that the environmental commission also asked about, um, whether the space for the community garden area, um, could be expanded a little bit, and as the daughter of someone who lives in, um, senior place where those little community gardens are treasured, absolutely treasured, I, I'm just wondering how many there are, uh, existing and, um, you know, what went into the thinking about the number of them?
Um, Jay, you want to identify, or I guess Lara's got the controls, the, um,
Right.
area on the plan?
Right. Lara's done an excellent job of circling the community garden. Um, the amount and area, I will leave and defer to the landscape architect, uh, Jason, who put the plan together. But, um, spatial wise, um, we are trying to avoid having to include any type of retaining walls along the property line, which obviously, again, adds cost to the project. Um, and in that area, we are grading down, say, cutting into the slope of the existing grade. Uh, if we expand to that garden area anymore, we'd need to use retaining walls, um, to make up for the additional ground that would be necessary. So we're kind of constrained by grading and what we need to do with the site. Unfortunately, in this instance, putting a very large building on a site that had a, a fair amount of grade going across it kind of dampens what you can do for the rest of the site. Uh, we, we've, we've made the garden area as, as large as possible. We potentially could add maybe a couple more. Um, I won't speak for Lara, but, uh, just at the north or the top of it, uh, of the garden area, uh, that's the only place I could maybe see adding maybe a couple more and get closer to the drainage inlet that we have in that location.
Okay, well, I, I'm not proposing to make it a condition. I just think they'll be in high demand. Um, and they're a wonderful, um, pastime for people. Uh, and, um, so it's worth considering, but I'm, I'm glad to see them there in the first place, and I'm sure they'll be popular. So, uh, let's see, can we stop sharing? So let's see, can we stop sharing the screen so I can see if there are other questions from board members?
I.
Mr. Cohen?
There, there's actually one in Q and A, and it relates to one of the comments in our professional, in our staff reports. So I do want to raise it at this time. Please clarify whether the secondary access point via the Avalon Bay parking area will be open for car truck access at all times. Can you clarify how specific truck traffic would access the building, garbage delivery trucks, meal delivery, et cetera, and the truck capacity limits?
Okay.
Okay, we can go back to sharing the screen then, and you can show us.
Sure. So Lara is getting her screen fired up. So the entrance that is being discussed, which is connection to the Avalon Bay development, which is to the top of the project where Lara's drawn the red line, as I understand, that access will be full access at all times. It's not going to be gated or limited between the two developments. And then the main access that we talked about is to Thanet Circle, Thanet Road, which leads into the project. Now, our, our goal is obviously to have all the traffic for the pro development come in the main access, which is closest to the front door. And you would expect people to use the easiest means of access to get in. And that includes deliveries for UPS, mail deliveries, any type of garbage pickup, emergency services, would all be able to come through that front access and maneuver around the site in a, you know, clockwise or counterclockwise pattern. All the access aisles have been set up to handle access by the largest emergency vehicle for the Prince and Fire Department, the ladder truck, which is a large vehicle, which means a garbage truck can traverse the site with no issues. Also, smaller type of moving trucks can also traverse the site. So there won't be any impacts to maneuverability. It's not designed to handle a large tractor trailer. But again, tractor trailer traffic wouldn't be anticipated for development of this type. Donald, did that answer the question? Or is there something that's still out there? Like, just make sure I covered everybody?
Well, I just, can you, can you actually show the flow that you would anticipate the garbage and delivery trucks would take the path?
Sure.
Jay, do you want me to bring up your, your exhibit on the fire truck?
Um, yeah, if you could, that would just give you the typical fire truck, and that would just show you the circulation for, I have it if you need it, or there you go. This isn't, this is, hey, Rick, this is not an exhibit in the package, so we may have to mark this as a separate exhibit, even though it's part of the application.
Yeah, I was just going to say, this was part of the original submission package, correct?
Yes.
No purposes of identification. Why don't you indicate what page of what, of what total at the bottom?
It's page one of one, and it's known as the Fire Truck Vehicle Maneuverability Plan that was submitted with the application package. So as you can see from the exhibit, we have the fire vehicle entering the Thanet Road access driveway, and then entering the driveway and essentially going in a, what we'll say, counterclockwise pattern to the first drive aisle, coming around and leaving the building. So we anticipate that would be the circular pattern for any type of delivery vehicles, any type of other truck traffic for mail drop off, mail pickup, and that would be the way to access the site. There's no prohibit, there's no, nothing prohibiting a mail truck or delivery truck from coming in and going directly along the front driveway. But we just showed this is the typical circulation pattern for larger vehicle, especially the fire truck vehicle.
Thank you.
Any other questions? She said, one really quick comment, since we talked about permeable pavement and using that in some of the parking spaces. If you, if you install that upstream of where the fire retention BMPs are at the end of those parking aisles, you could probably shrink the size of them because permeable pavement would handle a lot of water. But that's, you know, to be determined, once you figure out where you want the permeable pavement to go. It might make internal circulation easier per Mr. Oatman's comment and concern.
Sure. Then we can work with Jim on those changes, if we receive approval this evening, or if we receive approval.
Okay. Who do we want to hear from next, Mr.?
We'd like to call our architect, Ms. Jacqueline Camp.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Could you raise your right hand?
Yep.
Do you swear affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Okay. Please say your full name and spell your last name.
Jacqueline Camp, C.A.M.P.
And address?
1700 Market Street, Philadelphia.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Camp, if you could, provide the board a brief summary of your professional educational background, please?
Certainly. I'm a graduate of Temple University with a bachelor of architecture degree. I am a licensed architect. I have been licensed since 2005. Currently hold licenses in New Jersey, Pennsylvania, and Colorado. And I have approximately 15 years' experience working primarily in affordable housing in Pennsylvania, New Jersey, Maryland, Ohio, and currently the U.S. Virgin Islands.
We accept your qualifications. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Ms. Camp, are you familiar with this project?
Yes, I am.
And you're the architect primarily responsible for the architecture and design of the building?
Yes.
All right. If you could, I know we've got some exhibits premarked for you, and you can walk the board members of the public through the architectural aspects of the project. I believe it starts with the A4 line?
Well, I think, actually, I'd like to, if we could, here on A2. Briefly, I think that Jay pretty well covered most of what I would say architecturally. Based on the site plan, I just wanted, before we kind of zoom in on the building, to point out, obviously, we have the main entry to the building, and then a few, just emphasis on some of the site features. Coming into the, the site and into the driveway, the, the entry into the primary lobby for the building is labeled there, the, the main lobby entry. So we're coming in kind of at the center of the L. And then just wanted to, before we move off of it, also reiterate that that's the primary place where, where residents will come in. Primary outdoor amenity spaces are the, you know, the clubroom terrace at the south end of the building, the, our, our front porch element that meets that the Thanet Road Circle at the north end of the building. And then the community garden space, obviously, is going to be an important amenity for the tenants. I think the next, and then A3 is our ground floor architectural plan. And I just wanted to point those things out on the, that rendered landscape plan, because I think on, on these little screens, that was a little easier to see those amenity spaces. At the first floor, coming into the building, at the main entry lobby, to the right, we have a nice amenity seating area right at the lobby, something that we find is very popular in senior buildings. You know, the, the comings and goings from the building are often a, an element of great interest. So those lobby seating areas are very popular. We have the management suite just to this, on this page, just above the lobby waiting area. And then going the rest of the way up, that, that side of the L, we also have the maintenance suite where the onsite maintenance activities would take place. And adjacent to that is the trash room for this floor and the large compactor room. So trash from all of the floors will come down chutes to that compactor. And then on trash pickup days, those containers will be taken out, those double doors, to wait at the curb for the trash pickup from the building. Also, at this first floor, coming into the lobby to the left, we have a social services office and also an exam room for, to allow for the possibility of possible clinic days or uses of that sort. And then behind the elevator bank, I'm sorry, I'm moving the people on my screen because they're hiding the, the view. Behind the elevator bank is the, the main community room, which is the, the largest and probably most active community space in the building. It has a kitchenette area, some lounge seating areas, some tables that can be used kind of on a daily basis for card games or jigsaw puzzles or things that residents might want to get together to do. Adjacent to that, there is a laundry room. And in that same spot on every floor, we have, each floor has its own laundry room. So residents are able to do their laundry without having to carry laundry baskets up and down elevators or up and downstairs. And then the other amenity space that we had already looked at on the site plan is the large patio area at the north end of the building. Oh, I'm sorry, Larissa's pointing out the patio off of the community room, which is the, the one at the south end of the building. Yeah. And then down at the other end of that same wing, there's another large patio at the north end. And I also want to point out that just behind that patio, we also have a bike storage room, an indoor bike storage area at this floor that can be accessed through the stairwell that's just across the hall. So residents that want to be able to store their bikes inside the building can bring them in and through that stairwell and then into that bike storage area. And then I think if we go to the, the next exhibit, A4.
Sorry, all of a sudden, my computer's being very slow. Hold on one second.
Okay. You, you were just so furiously drawing everything in that it couldn't keep up?
Yeah.
All right. So this is just giving you a view of a representative upper floor. The, for the most part, the upper floors have a very similar layout. The unit layouts are identical floor to floor. And then the amenities that would be offered on each individual floor are also in, in the same places as you go floor to floor. So as you come off of the elevator, there's a large amenity area on each floor. At the second floor, that is a fitness room and a game room with a movable wall between them. So there's some flexibility for having larger exercise classes or the activities spilling back and forth between the two spaces, allowing for a lot of flexibility for the activities that could take place in that space. This floor has the laundry room in the same place that we were seeing at, at the first floor and, and at the floors above. That, that space, that amenity space at the elevator on the third floor is a combination of a game room and a craft room. And then when we get to the fourth floor, it's just another smaller community room. So there are a nice variety, and every floor has one of these kind of gathering spaces that kind of creates a little neighborhood at each floor for these residents in the building. And then also at each floor, there is a, a deck above the patio at the north end of the building. So each unit has its own private balcony amenity. But in addition to that, we do have this larger deck at each floor that can be a shared space. And the, I guess the other thing I would point out, less glamorous, but just as necessary, all the way at the other, at the end of the other, sorry, the other end of the L, every floor has a trash room that connects to the trash compactors. So residents will just bring their trash there. The, the trash goes into a chute. We haven't gotten into the fine details on this, but there will either be one chute with what's called a by sorter, so that both trash and recycling can go in and, and be diverted either into the compactor or into storage for recycling. Or we can, you know, some buildings, we just do two separate chutes so that there's one for trash and one for recycling. But both can be handled from this one trash room on every floor. And then just to talk about some of the overall building amenities, we're planning on and have committed to with, with the municipality, meeting the Department of Energy Zero Energy Ready requirements for this building. So that will deliver a building, a more high-performance building than one that is just code compliant. We'll be meeting the sprinkler requirements of NFPA 13. The building will be solar ready, so we won't be deciding, I think, until further into the process whether or not solar panels make sense with the different funding mechanisms. But we will at least have the building prepared to be able to accept solar at any point over the, the life of the building. At the roof, we have all of the mechanical equipment for all of the units and for the common areas of the building on the roof. And we are concealing all of that with a sloped mansard edge all the way around a flat roof in the center that concealed all of the mechanical equipment. And then Lara, if you want to go to the, the next slide, the rendered perspective, just looking at the exterior of the building. This is our north elevation, so this is the view that would be seen from the, the Thanet Road Circle and at the entry coming into the site. And this is where, at the ground floor, we have the large patio. And then at each floor above, we have our, our front porch decks. The materials on the building are a cultured stone at the ground level, and then a combination of hardy lap siding or fiber cement lap siding. And then some accent materials, this is a wood look material called resista. And then we have another view looking at the, the west elevation of the building and looking into the corner where the building entry is, showing the individual balconies at each of the units. And in those balcony recesses, we have the, the warmer wood look material. We did get, I wanted to just speak to some of the comments that we received from the, the meeting with the site plan review board. And they, there were some comments about some color choices. And so based on their comments, we made some adjustments to the, some material colors. And so what you're seeing now is the, you know, the, the new improved version of the, the building colors. There were comments about the roof configuration at the north end of the building that we have addressed and reworked that, the way that roof comes together a little bit. We did get, we got a comment about the, some of the unit balconies are a shared balcony area. And so we just got a question about whether there was a privacy panel between those. It's a little hard to see them in the rendered views, but wanted to assure the board that there is a privacy panel dividing those, those balconies that are joined in the massing of the building. And we did get a request from municipality that the lap siding be a fiber cement material rather than a vinyl material. So we have agreed to making that change to the material palette. And then we have, I think, one more slide. A7 is just a little bit more of a close-up view of the materials that we're considering for the building. So looking at the, the two colors of sidings that are used to modulate the massing of modulate the massing of the building, the composite wood panel, the cultured stone material, the asphalt shingles on the sloped portion of the roof, the flat portion of the roof, which won't be visible at all from the exterior of the building or from the ground, will just be an EPDM membrane and and then the the flashing and trim colors and materials. And I think with that, we can go to any questions. Anyone else?
I, Ms. Camp, I had one follow up question. One of the variances we discussed earlier tonight dealt with bedroom sizes. There's a provision in Princeton's code that says any bedroom in a multifamily dwelling must be at least 150 square feet. And I know there, can you provide a testimony relative to what would be the smallest bedroom size in any of the units within the building? Right. At the at the lowest, so that we can cover the variance. At worst, what's the smallest bedroom size we would be dealing with?
Well, I mean, it's a little bit of a trick question, so I'm going to, I'm going to give you a little more detail than you asked me for, just because that I think that what the what the zoning code states is that in a, in a one bedroom, you, you know, the first bedroom in any unit has to be a minimum of 150 square feet. And then the second bedroom has to be a minimum of 120 square feet, I think. We did ask for guidance from the city of Princeton on exactly how they wanted that calculated, because it it does, it is something that changes from one municipality to another. The guidance that we got was that that calculation is based on the total floor area of the bedroom, including the floor area of the closet. And by that measurement, we comply completely with the zoning ordinance on these documents. I think the comment that we received may have been a result of the fact that when we tag the bedrooms, we typically take sort of the main rectangular bulk of the bedroom. And those are the dimensions that go on the tag. So some of the bedrooms may be tagged as, for instance, being 11 feet by 12 feet in the largest bedroom. And if that were the only square footage in the room, that obviously, if you do the math, that doesn't get you to 150 square feet. But the the ordinance counts any little niches in front of doors or floor space in the bottom of the closet. And by that measurement, by the requirement and the rules that we were given by the city of Princeton, all of our bedrooms are in compliance.
Okay.
Maybe we can stop sharing the screen so I can see if members of the board have questions. Are there questions for Ms. Camp?
I can start.
Go ahead. And then Mr. Cohen. And did you raise your hand also? No? Okay. Go ahead, Zena. Oh, and then Jeffrey.
So I just, as you can imagine, have some questions about sustainability. I commend you guys for doing net zero ready. Although I was just curious if there was, well, so it first of all, is are the appliances and the heating going to be natural gas or will they be electric heat pump? And then also a follow up to that, I mean, was passive house standard considered in in terms of efficiency?
Going to start with your first question, which was that we, the appliances in the building per the zero energy ready requirement will all be energy star rated, high efficiency. They haven't made final decisions yet on what the mechanical systems will be. So I can't answer yet the question of whether or not there will be any gas fired appliances. But you know, we'll be, we'll be looking at the options as we get further into the design process. And then there was a second part of your question and I've forgotten.
Oh, whether passive house was considered as an option.
I can take that one because this came up during the negotiation of the redevelopment plan itself and the redevelopment plan specifically provides that it would be zero energy ready. So that was a specific provision that was incorporated into that. And that is the standard that we designed to.
Okay, well, it's possible to do both, but yeah, I mean, I guess if it's in the standard, then I guess that's what you yeah, but I in terms of so I guess the heating system, you don't know whether heat pumps would be used in the HVAC at this point.
There's a pretty extensive process that's usually involved in getting to the we've decided on all the details of all the various building systems. And so I can't answer at this point with any certainty that we will be 100% electric. There's a possibility that we could end up with some of the appliances being gas.
That's fine.
Not be doing gas gas stoves. I can guarantee that part, but as far as the mechanical equipment, I don't know.
But so you're saying there will be gas stoves or there won't be?
No, no, I said, I I was saying that that's the only thing I can give you.
Guarantee that's electric.
So I can assure you that that's not part of the way Pearl has done buildings that I've been involved in. So I'm fairly confident in saying that there would not be any gas stoves. We have done all electric buildings with Pearl. We have done buildings that included gas. It's a long process of working out what makes the most sense for any particular project.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, based off of my research, you know, I think that, I mean, there are heat pumps that can work in New Jersey's climate of fully electric, but I mean, potentially a combination of heat pumps and natural gas, efficient natural gas furnaces could potentially work and and really limit the use of natural gas through primary primarily heating through heat pumps. So something to keep in mind. And I don't know if I saw this, but there there won't be any indoor bike parking. And I didn't, I'm sorry, I forgot to ask this earlier in terms of the the actual site, but
I don't, I don't know if we're bringing the plan back up, but at the first floor, we do have an indoor bike room. And then also some outside bike racks. So both options are available to the resident.
Okay, great. Thanks.
The, well, I'm sorry, I'm breaking my own rule. Mr. Cohen had a question and then Mr. Oakman.
Yeah. So first I wanted to thank you for being so receptive to the sprab material comments. I think that I I like the way the building is looking now. So I think that was great collaboration. And then the question I had was about solar panels on the roof and you know, in the PEC recommendation, it makes reference to power purchase agreements. And I know that you know, it's possible to get somebody to essentially pay for the solar panels on your roof with, you know, some reduction in the utility rates. So I guess if you can go into any detail about how that decision making happens, when you talk about it, depending on cost and stuff like that.
And I think Lara is anxious to take this one.
So, Mr. Cohen, the the, as you know, the SRA program has kind of gone to the wayside and there's some new pilot programs that are out. We've researched them. They're not very clear on paybacks and how it would work clearly in a multifamily building. There's also some provisions for affordable housing and how they might be able to benefit for that. So we have done the research. It is totally not clear right now what direction this is going. And there's still a lot of open criteria, you know, determination in there. So today I couldn't tell you if it's a benefit or not to the project from a cost standpoint. Generally, when we do these buildings, not like a single family house, we don't lease out the roof. So we would put it on and install it and use it in that regard. We have reached out to a solar consultant that we've used in the past and we're investigating it. At this point, we can, you know, guarantee that, listen, the end of the day, it is beneficial to a multifamily building of this sign to have solar on the roof. The building is nicely situated for us to take advantage of solar. The unknown at this point and why we can't say 100% we're going to go that direction is the new programs that are out there and how the purchasing of the solar kind of works. And so we can say that we'll continue to explore it. We can say that we're going to definitely make the project solar ready. What I can't tell you today is if we're going to be able to, you know, what the finances are around actually getting it on the roof and operating it.
Okay, so if I can sort of paraphrase what I think I heard you say is that a PPE, a power purchase agreement or PPA is not you want to get more advantage out of the solar installation. And so you want to wait and see if you can get a get an array that you will actually own through
That's correct.
One of the programs.
Correct. It's the only real beneficial way for the property to to put it on.
Great. Thanks.
Mr. Oakman?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I I wanted to thank you also because I I think this is, I like this design. I think I've spent some time developing affordable properties pretty similar to this one. And I think there's a number of things here that you've done in in terms of the the aspects of of the interior design and and community components that are really smart and will will support a successful community. I I've just got like a probably a dumb question, which is what, you know, you've got the, you've got the relatively steep roof line. And I'm just wondering what what's, what, if anything, is underneath that above the above the last floor of you know, between the last floor of the of residential and the roof. And are there any implications of that that large space there for from a from a sustainability and energy efficiency perspective?
The answer to the question is that the the sloped portions of the roof are just really sort of an one, one aesthetic expression of what's essentially a parapet wall. But it's giving that sloped roof look to the building that makes it more compatible with the architectural style of the Avalon Bay community that we are, you know, hoping to be complementary to. And and the other function that those sloped edges on the roof have, and Larry, would it help if we brought up the roof plan just so that everyone can really see the extent of the sloped versus flat roof? We did, we did have that in reserve in our package in case there were your questions just like these. It's the very last sheet. Yeah. So this is our roof plan. So the darker shading is
Becky, please identify the the exhibit.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is A15. The darker shaded areas are the areas of sloped roof. And the slope on these roofs, the pitch on these roofs is really only four and 12. So it's not as steep as the the renderings might make you feel. It's it was a challenge for us in the rendered view, especially at the end of the building. The fact that it's a four story building and it's so close to the sidewalk and we were trying to really give you the experience of that entry coming in the driveway. But it means that you're kind of looking up at the roof at an angle that makes it look in that one static moment much steeper than it really is. But in fact, that's only a four and 12 slope. And then behind that is a flat roof that allows us to have all of our condensers for all 80 units plus the mechanical equipment for the common areas screened behind those areas of sloped roof. So it's kind of a slightly more contemporary twist on a more traditional roof appearance. So that allows us to still have the advantages of a flat roofed building where we can screen the mechanical equipment and not have it down on the ground where everybody has to look at it. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thanks. That's helpful. I think the, I think the way one of some of the pictures looked, it looked like you had, it looked like it was sloped roofs all the way, you know, to a peak. So that's helpful to see the roof plan. Thank you.
Other questions from board members from Ms. Camp? I had a quick question. Do the do the windows open?
Oh, yes. The units all have operable windows. There are also operable windows in the common areas, although in my experience, those don't very often get opened, but the units all have operable windows. The tenants have complete control over whether they want to be running their air conditioning or whether they want their windows open or not.
Great. I think I think there was a question in the sprab memo about the bike storage being up a few steps. Maybe you could speak to that and and whether there are, when you do have to use steps, whether there are ways to design it so that it's easier, you know, the, well, just speak to that.
Yeah, we have, we've actually looked at that and talked it through. We do have a, you know, it really makes sense to have that stair tower door be where the bikes would come in, just because it's right across the hall from where the bike storage is. So it would limit how far through the building the bikes need to come in case the tires are wet and they're leaving tracks or something. But that door, because of the proximity of the sidewalk and the fact that we don't have a lot of room to be making upgrade on the site, there are four steps between the sidewalk at the edge of the parking lot and the door to the stair tower. What we have talked about is instead of those four steps all being continuous, that that what we'll do is is two steps with a landing in between them. So that we don't necessarily have to have railings on both sides of the steps because we are only doing two risers at a time with a break in between. And so what we can do bringing the bikes in is the pedestrian can walk up the two steps, but the bike can actually roll up the lawn next to the sidewalk and won't have to come up the steps. Right. That will work to be able to very easily get bikes in, even though we have to have those steps there. If we happen to have a resident who is able bodied enough to ride a bike, but not able bodied enough to handle that arrangement of steps at that door, there is always the option of bringing the bike to the main entry and just rolling it all the way down the hallway and not having that at all.
Okay. Mr. Quinn?
Madam Chair, there's a question in Q and A that I think was is for the architect if if Council President Cohen, who typically does that duty.
Sure. Thanks for reminding me. Quick question. Would planters be allowed in the balconies or can they be built in?
Um, we haven't really, oh, you want to do that, Lara?
Yeah. We allow residents, especially our seniors, to decorate within reason. That's we wouldn't build them into the building. But we allow residents within reason to decorate their balconies. You'll often see for the holidays, they, you know, decorate. So we encourage that as long as it's not overdone.
I'd hate to be the one to take that call.
If I could, I, if I could, Madam Chair, I I, I think perhaps the question is getting to whether someone could have a a box to grow plants or possibly tomatoes or cherry tomatoes or something. I think that this question came in right around the time that we were talking about the community garden and I'm I'm just projecting my own question upon the the person who asked in the Q and A.
Sure. As as I said, yeah, so they can, if there's someone wanted to hang like a, like one of those boxes that they can plant, you know, spices in or things like that, they absolutely can. We give and Jason will explain how the garden works with our residents. I think Mia, Ms. Sacks and some others saw how it works at one of our other communities. But yeah, I mean, with it again, that that's a non issue.
Okay. So if I wanted to put vines there to grow grapes, I'm only kidding. That that would be the area where you would draw the line, correct? Okay.
Now, we draw the line when you stop on your grapes barefoot to make wine.
While you're seeing areas, Mr. Purcell.
Madam Chair, I just have, I still have a concern about the size of the bedrooms and perhaps it's just me. But what I heard in the testimony is that even though at the beginning, they were talking about seeking the variance, that the testimony sounds like they don't need the variance. But I still have But I still have, I still have not been convinced that all of the units meet the 150 square foot. So if it's still appropriate, staff supports the variance. So if it's, if it's still appropriate to grant the variance on the off chance that there is one or two units that don't meet that 150 square foot area, we haven't been able to confirm that. I just want to put that out there. And if it's okay with Mr. Muller to grant, to go ahead with that variance, I think it might be.
And I, and I think that that was actually the intention with the notion that we're confident that the bedrooms all work, we're confident that they're furnishable, we're confident that they meet the requirements of HUD for accessibility and for the New Jersey Accessibility Code that requires that they all be type A units. The only question is, you know, we were getting that comment in spite of the fact that we had communicated with Princeton and gotten the rules about how to set, set the sizes of the bedrooms. So since the question was still coming up, we were seeking the variance just to be sure that we were all comfortable that we'd met the rule in every possible way. But, but we have confidence that they're very workable bedrooms, they're furnishable, they're accessible. I think they'll be fine.
I am the one that keeps questioning it, so.
So, so your point is well taken and just to be on the safe side will include that variance.
So I'd like to ask our zoning officer to comment on that because this keeps coming up again and again with the bedroom sizes. And then we had one applicant who said that they went through the entire code and they couldn't find it. The municipal attorney couldn't find it in our code. So I, I'm just, I'm just wondering, like, does it exist? Does it not exist? What, what is the?
I'm a little perplexed as to why it exists because typically the township didn't allow multifamily housing and the E zones were exempt. So it definitely exists. Not sure why.
Derek, if I sworn you in, I don't think, do you swear or affirm the testimony you give will be the truth?
Yes, sir. I did. I guess it was just to make sure there are adequate sizes of bedrooms, but you know, I think in my opinion, it's a little outdated. It is an ordinance on our books, so I would, Jim and I both support the variants for it. We think the project works well, just based on the view of the floor plans. But it's something that we should look at going forward and do we need to have this on the books? It's nice to have a, a safety hatch, but I mean, the bedrooms all seem to be of a reasonable size. They are furnishable. They will serve the purposes of the inhabitants and I think.
The affordable housing, isn't this, isn't our standard, the higher standard, are the HUD standards or the state standards? And it would, you know, I mean, what, what is the, what is the bottom line standard here? And I mean, in other words, like if we've met the state and federal standard, just out of curiosity, does the municipal standard still matter?
I, I don't know if there is a state or federal. I'm gonna have to, maybe Michael knows.
Well, I think Jim's point was that technically it matters because it's on the books here in Princeton. But I think time has passed by this minimum requirement for bedroom size. I mean, I think to tag this space is important so that our local ordinance has been addressed. But, but I think staff is very comfortable with what's being proposed in terms of bedroom sizes.
And yes, there is a minimum in state standards that's considerably less than 150. You know, we, we have it, it's there, we have to deal with it. And as Derek said, as we move forward, we need to consider it as we look at consolidating ordinances and, and things, so.
And if I can make a comment, I don't think this is one of those areas like with the building code where we're not locally permitted to exceed what the state regulation is. You know, I think that we were allowed at the time that we did it to put in our zoning code bedroom sizes. But that doesn't mean that we want to keep them, as everybody keeps saying.
We'll, we'll be happy to take the variance and just move along.
Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Camp? Okay. Who's up next, Mr. Hoff? I wanna, I'm sort of watching the clock. I'm aware now that you all had hoped and expected and very much wanted to get through everything tonight. But we really can't go past 11 without, I don't know, violating some good government.
Miss Wilson, I'd certainly appreciate that.
Physical endurance things, and we have to deal with this, with this ordinance, so.
We have Mr. Tronco is a landscape architect who is under very strict instructions to provide short testimony. And then the traffic engineer is the same traffic engineer with largely the exact same testimony you heard with Avalon Bay. He's been instructed to be less than one minute. So we anticipate being able to push through with the indulgence of the board.
Okay.
It will not take us to the 11 o'clock hour, I can assure you.
Okay. Mr. Muller, you can swear in. Mr. Tronco?
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give be the truth?
I do.
Just want to affirm, please state your full name, spell your last name, and give your address.
Jason Tronco, T R O N C O, 200 Union Ave in Brielle, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Mr. Tronco, same drill. Your professional educational background for the board, please?
Sure. Graduate of West Virginia University with a Bachelor of Science in Landscape Architecture. I'm a New Jersey Licensed Landscape Architect and a professional planner by exam. I work at Malillo and Bauer Associates since October 1998. Testified before many, many boards within New Jersey. I even had the privilege to represent Princeton Borough as the Planning Board Landscape Architect a long time ago.
And all licenses are current in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, to offer, Mr. Tronco is a qualified expert in the field of landscape architecture.
We accept your qualifications. Thank you.
Thank you. So first exhibit we're looking at is A2, that's the rendered landscape plan. The landscape plans were prepared by our office, Malillo and Bauer Associates. They were prepared in accordance with the development recommendations and also the guidelines. The site has been developed with native plant species, a very diverse indigenous plant palette, which includes pollinator species, species that provide habitat, and that includes shade trees, evergreen trees, ornamental trees, deciduous evergreen shrubs, perennials, and ornamental grasses. The plants have been specifically located for their solar aspect and microclimate conditions. As I think Jackie and Jay has touched on, there's two outdoor seating areas for residents. One fronting on Thanet at the corner of the building provides a front porch for the residents to watch people and enjoy, enjoy the outdoors. The other is at the south, south corner of the building, which has a lounge seating and is also a great area for people to gather and gather with friends and see neighbors. In addition, a community garden has been provided. This has 22 raised gardens, each of which can be split and worked by two patrons. So those, each of those raised gardens are large enough to be split in half and, and have a double, double garden. I would like to note that this is a very popular feature at Pearl's Freehold similar community. Site is linked, fully linked with pedestrian circulation via sidewalks, links the site, and it also links to the surrounding areas. Jay also mentioned the two bio-retention basins are located on the site. Native seed mixes have been specified for those basins. These seed mixes were, they were specified based on the position within the basin. So a seed mix comprising of plants that like periodic wet soils are located on the slopes. A more general rain garden seed mix is provided at the outside of the basin. And, and down at the bottom is a seed mix which have plants that really like more soil moisture. So we split that up into different zones. Also, as Jay has mentioned, the project identification signs, one located at the entry from Thanet. It's constructed of mason, with a masonry base to match the architecture. It also has an attractive sign panel with raised aluminum backlit lettering, backlit lettering, approximately 24 square feet in area. The area around the sign has been landscaped with ornamental grasses, evergreen shrubs, and seasonal annuals which provide color and some interest, textural interest. There's a shared sign at, that is shared with Avalon, and that happens at the corner of Thanet and Tahoon Roads. Jay also mentioned a small free wayfinding signage for the, for the leasing office. And that's also been provided on the plans. There was one note regarding a substitution of a plant species, the pin oak for a white oak variety, and we'll make that suggestion as suggested by the Shade Tree Commission. In addition, any additional comments or recommendations would be, you know, included in the plans. And that pretty much concludes my testimony.
Mr. Tronco, if we could go back, flashed up on the screen, exhibit A9, you made reference to the description of the sign for this project. Would it reflect the one that's being depicted on A9, which is another Pearl property?
Yes, very similar sign. The base of this sign would be cultured stone, as Jackie has mentioned, is on the building. So different from the Freehold sign that you're looking at, that's brick. Ours would be a cultured stone product.
Okay. And then very briefly, there was some discussion about the community gardens area. If we go back to A2, you're familiar with that area in there? And to the extent that, could you describe where it's depicted? How many areas are we talking when, when you have that area? Like, how many beds are on each side? Is that depicting?
20, 22.
Okay. And to the extent if demand were such, is there room in there to perhaps squeeze in two or four additional ones?
Yeah, it's a squeeze, but it looks about maybe two or three.
Okay.
Additional.
And as you indicated, we comply with not only the redevelopment plan, but the planting requirements as set forth in the Princeton ordinances. Is that correct?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Madam Chair, I have nothing further from Mr. Tronco affirmatively.
Okay, we can stop sharing the screen for a little bit. Any, anybody have questions for Mr. Tronco? Mr. Lookplace?
Yes, thank you. The monument signs, the project identification signs, they appear to be internally illuminated. Is that correct?
I know, I, I don't think they're internally illuminated at all. The letters are backlit. So each letter is pin mounted and has light shining towards the sign.
So it's like a halo effect?
Yes, halo lighting, exactly.
And, all right, because it looked like, the example you showed from, I don't know where that was from, Freehold or whatever. It looked like an internally illuminated sign, but you're telling me it's sort of a concealed source? It's a halo effect?
Yes, definitely. They're radiate from the letters.
We usually have externally illuminated signs in Princeton, you know, if they're freestanding signs, but I understand what you're talking about. Okay, thank you.
Pardon me if I missed this, but is the lighting in the parking area basically the same type of lighting as is found in the Avalon Bay parking? Or is it different? I remember seeing in the memos that it's, you know, dark sky compliant and all of that. I'm just curious, is it the 12-foot stanchions?
That would be Jay. You know the answer to that? Jay Cruz, our civil engineer.
Oh, sorry about that.
That's okay.
Okay, I'm still.
He wasn't allowed to leave.
I'm still here. Our lighting is mounted at 15 feet for the spread. So it is, I think, I'm not sure if it's similar to what Avalon Bay has proposed, but our height mounting height is 15 feet and it's got more of a, it's LED lighting with a kind of a pseudo-colonial top with downward throw.
Okay, so it'll be distinct from, from there. Is that?
Right.
I'm just curious about the height of it. Other questions for Mr. Tronco? Okay, and you, you said you had one more. Thank you, Mr. Tronco. I like your plant selection very much.
Thanks.
Yes, Mr. Corey Chase, he's our traffic engineer.
Okay.
Mr. Chase, if you can raise your right hand. Swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Just want to affirm, please state your full name, spell your last name, and give your address.
Certainly. It's Corey Chase. Last name is C H A S E. Principal with the firm Dynamic Traffic located at 245 Main Street, Rochester, New Jersey. Licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. License is currently in good standing. Been qualified as expert in traffic engineering before over 100 municipalities, including Princeton, as Mr. Hoff mentioned, as part of the Avalon Bay application.
I didn't even have to ask him, Ms. Chairwoman Wilson, so I'd ask that he be qualified as, to offer traffic engineering testimony.
We accept his qualifications. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Chase, as you indicated, you appeared and testified in connection with the Avalon Bay application, is that correct?
That is correct.
As part of that application, did you incorporate the traffic being generated from the entire site, including the Pearl property?
We did, yes.
Okay. Can you just briefly describe some of the traffic implications from this particular project?
As part of our involvement in the application, we did prepare a traffic impact study date on August 17, 2020. Again, as Mr. Hoff mentioned, we did look at the traffic of the development totality, the Avalon Bay parcel as well as the Pearl parcel. The specific traffic generation associated with the 80 senior adult housing units is summarized on Table 4, which is on page eight of our report. It was generated based on data published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers in the 10th and current edition of trip generation, which is the national and state standard for projecting traffic volumes. The development's going to generate a maximum of only 26 peak hour trips. To give the board an idea, that's about one trip every three minutes during the peak hour, every two to three minutes. The state, the NJDOT, as well as the IT, they have a threshold for a significant increase in traffic of 100 or more peak hour trips. So we're approximately 25% of that threshold for a significant traffic generation. So this development in and of itself will not create a significant increase in traffic. But we did perform a traffic impact analysis looking at pre and post-development conditions at the Thanet Road intersection with Tahoon, as well as the Tahoon intersection with North Harrison Street. And we found that with the development in totality, again, the Avalon Bay parcel and the Pearl parcel, there were no degradations in level of service at either of those intersections during any of the peak hours studied. As Mr. Cruz mentioned, we are providing 80 parking stalls on site, which is in compliance with the redevelopment plan. As Mr. Hoff noted, we do need a diminut, minimus exception from the residential site improvement standards, although we are in compliance with the redevelopment plan. As Mr. Cruz also noted, the, the development exceeds the typical parking requirement for what Pearl's seen on similar developments, which was 0.67 spaces per unit, which translates to a parking demand of 54 spaces. That's actually in compliance with the IT data for senior housing developments. They have a parking generation manual, which is similar to the trip generation manual, but only provides parking generation data. The 85th percentile parking demand published by the IT for senior housing is also 54 spaces. So that confirms what Pearl's seen on other developments in the area. Based on that, we feel that the diminut, minimus exception from the RSI standards can be granted without any negative impacts. Be happy to answer any questions that the board may have or touch on any points, Mr. Hoff, that you think I may have missed.
Yep, Mr. Chase, just one follow-up point was raised in one of the review letters. And you were, and during the SBRAB committee, this was raised as well. You'll notice that the driveway entrance to the project as it relates to the entrance to the Avalon Bay parcel. Any concern from your perspective on a traffic perspective that there's, presents any conflict with the location of those drives?
There's not, Mr. Hoff, and I provided testament, Modi, on this at the Avalon Bay hearing as well. As I noted, the driveway to the Pearl development, it's going to be a very low volume development. And both of those access points, because they intersect Thanet Circle, are limited to right in and right out movement. So your points of conflict are very limited in this area. And again, given that the Pearl driveway is going to be a very low volume, we talked about one trip every. And again, given that the Pearl driveway is going to be a very low volume, we talked about one trip every two to three minutes. I don't see any potential issues with points of conflict or safety or circulation impacts as a result of the proximity of the driveway.
Nothing from a site perspective, sightlines, they're all clear, it should be easily navigated for either development?
That's correct.
And you've had the opportunity to examine the internal circulation of the project and from a traffic and circulation perspective, any concerns?
No concerns.
Thank you, I have nothing further for Mr. Chase.
Sorry about that, can we stop sharing the screen, please? We'll see the whole board. Are there questions for Mr. Chase or Ms. Bellgawen? Do you want to weigh in at all? I don't want to put you on the spot. I'm just aware that you're there, that you're here on our behalf. Any other questions from the board? Mr. Quinn?
Yes, there was reference, I think Councilwoman Sacks made reference to a possible connector road from the parking lot to the, I think the Medical Arts Building next door. The question is that we're not to consider that in, as part of this process of approval, I assume, and there seemed to be some question as to where such a possible connector would go, Mr. Purcell? Or someone from the applicant or our people? Could you speak further to that and add some clarity?
On behalf of the applicant, I can tell you, this is not something I believe was discussed in connection with this particular application at all. So it's not something that we've incorporated, it's not something we've anticipated in the design. So to that, we can't offer any commentary on that. All the circulation, all the traffic perspective counts are all done based upon the design you've seen, and we're not anticipating any future connection points into this project.
I figured as much, it's just that it was raised earlier, so I thought that I would clarify it for the record.
No, I appreciate it, because at the time, I should have commented, so I apologize.
No need to apologize.
Thank you both. Any other questions related to traffic or circulation? Okay, so, Mr. Hoff, that concludes the testimony of your professionals, is that correct?
It does.
So with no other questions from the board, this is a good time to open it up for questions and comments, testimony from the public. Those members of the public who are watching, if you have questions or want to testify, click on the little raise, click on the little hand icon in the center of your Zoom screen. Mr. Cohen, is anyone raising their hand?
Not at this time.
Okay, then I will close the public hearing portion of the meeting. Let's see, well, I guess I'll just ask, would anyone like to move this? If there are no further questions or comments, once we have a motion and a second, then Mr. Muller will go through a lot of conditions, but I think because they've actually been summarized quite beautifully in Mr. Purcell's memo and the few additional notes in the margin that people probably have, maybe that won't take very long, but I'll start talking and see if someone wants to move it.
I'd be delighted to move approval. I think it's a very exciting project and well-done presentation by all.
Great, thank you, Mr. Quinn. Need a second?
No one's going to second.
Oh, yes, no one will. Well, Mr. Cohen seconded it first.
Okay.
He was the first second this time. Okay, Mr. Muller, do you want to walk us through the conditions right now? Well, if we can do that in, you know, five minutes or so, that, at very most 10, that should give us enough time to deal with the ordinance referral.
Okay, let me first go back over the relief. It's preliminary and final major site plan approval. There are three variances. The one dealing not with lighting, because they're going to comply. The one dealing with the bedroom square footage, one dealing with the sign. And then the third, well, I guess it's not really a variance, it's a diminutest exception with respect to parking, because with the bank parking, they're below the RSIS standards. It's conditional use approval associated with the reduction in parking from the township standards. There was also one waiver required major site plan checklist. And then following conditions, and as the chair indicated, Jimin and Derek have summarized the conditions on page six, I'm sorry, page nine, section six of their memo. I could read them if you want, but they're all self-evident, I would just pick them up the way they are. Do you think it's necessary for me to read them, Louise?
From, you're talking, I'm sorry, I was looking at, I think the same thing you're looking at on page nine of Mr.
Exactly.
Purcell's memo. No, I don't think that you need to read them.
Now, in addition to that.
I mean, any other members of the board feel we want a little bit of read aloud? No, I'm not seeing any nodding faces, so.
In addition to that, from Mrs. Scoopie, a memo of, actually, it's a letter to Mr. Purcell of October 18, and in section C, which is Princeton Senior Apartments Project Review Comments, he has a series of conditions with respect to stormwater management. There are eight of them. I could read those. Rick, have you had a chance to look at them and do you have any problem with any of them?
No, it's the last page of Mrs. Scoopie's report.
Yeah, it's pages six and seven.
We're all good.
Okay. Any need for me to read those?
No, sir.
Okay. I think we've all been burned by the last time. Let me see, then, in terms of Heather's report. Now, the first one she recommends is coordination and collaboration are required between this application Avalon Bay to address internal circulation and improvements within the impacted area of the development, but I think that's already been a condition of the Thanet approval, so I don't think we need that. Then access, circulation, and emergency vehicles defer to the Fire Department and Police Department. And I would assume we would want something from the emergency services indicating that access is satisfactory, correct?
That sounds right, is that right, Mr. Purcell?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. And she has the condition about access to the building, but I'll get to that in a second. Then improvements along through Union Road, the applicant should coordinate with the municipality to include these improvements in the traffic analysis and consider how these future developments and enhancements may impact their traffic projections. I think we already have that condition in Thanet, but we can, I think we should put that here too.
Yeah, that one wouldn't be one we'd be agreeable to, this municipally sponsored project, so that would just mean Princeton paying for road improvements.
And Jerry, I would agree, that's not appropriate for this development.
It's not improvements, it's just the traffic generated by the improvements should be included in the traffic study.
Because it is actually implying other improvements and it's not, it really shouldn't be considered for this one.
Okay, I mean, the improvements that have been considered are other developments, I mean, that's a notion there, but that's fine if you take that out. And the Environmental Commission several pages of proposals. Are there any that, when reviewing this report, that any members of the public thought might be appropriate to include?
I think the ones that we talked about were the EV chargers.
Okay.
For four, two charging stations servicing four spaces with conduit for an additional three spaces. And the applicant agreed to install permeable pavement where it makes sense.
Okay, and then I'm going to get.
Parking stalls and.
Right, and after I go through the reports, it's almost finished, I'm just going to go through my notes and pick up the remaining ones.
Oh, okay.
And Jerry, just to that point, the issue of the EV was, we were agreeable to it, but it was on request from the council, because it would be a cost issue in the overall project.
Right, right, and that would be something that you'd have to work out, if you could, work out with the council, ask for an agreement.
Yeah, that is what we discussed, you're right.
Right, in terms of SPRAB, I think the only recommendations were those relating to sidewalks, and you'd be willing to work with Mr. Purcell on the sidewalk issues, which I think I laid out in three, four, and five of the Site Plan Visual Advisor Board recommendations, but there could be others as well, including safe access to the main entrance from the parking lot. And with Heather as well as Jim.
Right, so we were going to provide flexibility for the final plan pedestrian circulation configuration upon consultation with engineering and traffic.
Right, then, and they've already agreed to this, this is from the Shade Tree Commission. Trees in the white oak species be substituted for the pin and red oaks due to this susceptibility to bacterial leaf scorch disease. And just going through my notes, applicant will reduce illumination levels to comply with ordinance standards. We'll put permeable pavement on, in all parking stalls.
Not, I don't think it was all we would find, yeah, it's not all, it's not all, there would be.
What would it be?
Jay, what was the section we were looking at?
It would be the parking stalls that are not facing the building, anything that's not fronting the building.
Not facing the building?
Yeah, the parking, the fronting the building, not fronting the building.
And Jim, that's clear to you what that means?
It is clear to me.
Okay, then you bank the 15 spaces along the Wesley property line, will decide whether to install some or all of them in consultation with the municipality before the project is closed out. And then is the chair install the two EV charging stations for four spaces, subject to agreement with the municipality on cost, and conduit for three more spaces, same point about cost. I don't know if you want, we need to put this in, NFPA 13 sprinklers, we didn't do this for Thanet, I would not suggest we put it in, but we could. Anybody want to add?
They testified that they were going to do NFPA 13.
Okay, we'll put it in. And then solar, the building will be solar ready. There'll be two or three additional community garden planting beds. And that's it. That's all.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any final questions or comments? Seeing none. Carrie, will you call the roll, please?
Certainly. Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sacks?
Yes.
Mr. Tex Arney?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much, and thank you. We'll give you the additional time tonight to get us through, it's very much appreciated.
Thank you, everyone, we're excited.
Well, you're very welcome, we are too, I think it's safe to say. So have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for everything and to all your professionals, and nice job. Looking forward to seeing it all happen.
Thank you very much.
So next on the agenda is ordinance referral, the stormwater ordinance. I see Deanna is here. And are you going to pick up the ball and run with it, so to speak?
Yes, I will do that. Let's see here, just a second, I'm going to pull up my notes. Okay, thank you, 10:15, not bad, I appreciate that. Good evening, everyone. As part of the agenda packet, you should have received the engineering memo with DEP's attached presentation about the changes to the statewide stormwater rules, as well as the two proposed Princeton stormwater ordinances. For background, in March 2020, New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection adopted amendments to the statewide stormwater management rules. A main feature of the new rules includes managing stormwater closer to the source of creation and using green infrastructure. Additionally, DEP has updated the definition for major developments to include a look back to 2004 in regards to impervious surface. So what this means is that the developer has to include all impervious areas created since 2004 in their stormwater ordinance, in their stormwater calculations. And municipalities have been given one year to update our ordinances to be consistent with or more stringent than the state rules. If you recall, in 2017, Princeton had adopted our current stormwater ordinance, and at the time, we included more stringent regulations for a major development. Instead of five, instead of a quarter of acre of new impervious area as the threshold for a major development, we reduced that to 5,000 square feet. We also established a regulation for residential and non-residential projects that create as little as 400 square feet of new additional impervious surface and named that a minor development. So at the time when the 2017 ordinance was created, all of these regulations were placed in the site plan section of the municipal code and applied to all development. So tonight, the two ordinance you have before you, 2020-38 and 2020-39, appropriately separate the new stormwater regulations into two ordinances. One that will be placed under site plan regulations and the other under the zoning regulations. But the ordinances still keep the more stringent regulations that we established in 2017 with the updates per the state regulations. So stormwater regulations for major and minor developments, which are subject to the approval by the Planning and Zoning Board, are contained in Ordinance 2020-38. The regulations for small and large projects, which are typically the one and two family residential properties, which have that 400 square feet of impervious area threshold, are contained in Ordinance 2020-39. Many of the stated goals in the green building and environmental sustainability element of Princeton's Community Master Plan are achieved in these ordinances, including the protection and improvement of Princeton's water quality, management of stormwater with green practices to reduce flooding and pollution, and use of low-impact development measures to protect forested areas. And tonight, we seek the planning board's concurrence that these ordinances are consistent with Princeton's Community Master Plan. I don't know if there were any questions about the ordinance. We worked closely, the Flood and Stormwater Commission were active participants in this creation of these ordinances. And David Zenon, Louise, I think. And David Zenon, Louise, I think many of the members on the planning board are familiar with the minute details of these ordinances, but I can answer questions, or if you'd like to add more, please do.
I mean, I'll just make the case that this is so in line with the new green building and environmental sustainability element that we just adopted a couple of months ago. So in terms of consistency, kind of a no-brainer.
Yes, and prelude to even more potential amendments that are also envisioned in the green building and sustainability element, the applying to redevelopment and, you know, a couple of other things. Yeah, so are there questions for Deanna? Then, would someone like to move that we find is inconsistent with Mia is raising her hand? Mia, you'll have to, there you go. I thought you might have a question or a comment, okay. That these ordinance, we find these ordinances to be consistent with the community master plan.
I'll second.
Mr. Cohen, seconds. Any, any final questions, comments?
Great work.
One, I think we don't need a roll call, do we? Is this a voice vote? Yes, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. The opposed or abstaining? Wow, we did not need 45 minutes to discuss this. But I'm really glad we're not at 11 o'clock right at this moment.
I think we all are.
Yes.
Well done, well done, everyone.
Were they premature to move to adjourn?
If you don't, I will, Mr. Cohen. I'll second, I'll second Mr. Cohen's motion.
Say aye.
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 Deanna, thanks for joining us at 10:15.
That's okay, I have to pick my daughter up at Montgomery EMS at 11 o'clock, so.
Well, happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thank you.
Wait, we don't have another meeting on Thursday? Can't you guys get it?
My schedule freed up, I can meet on Thursday.
How about you guys get an ordinance together and refer it to us?
I think it's next Thursday on Thanksgiving.
Yeah. Carrie, make sure, Carrie, make sure you send, make sure you send Tim the Thanksgiving Zoom meeting.
I'll do that.
This will be on, will be on lockdown, so.
I understand that Princeton's winning the.